Welcome to the June 5th, June 5th School Committee Meeting. District Vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2: Statement by the Chair Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This School Committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Okay, so we have one person recording. Is that an audio or a video? Okay, thank you. It's, pardon me?
Ask her to identify herself.
Oh, could you please identify yourself?
My name's Rachel DeVady. I'm from Cape Cod, Texas.
Thank you. All right. Item 2: Highlight in Education. 2.1: Recognition of Students in the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. And come on up.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Morse. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning, Pre-K through 5, and I also oversee the Gateway Department, K to 12. I am excited to share with you a great accomplishment and a partnership that we have in Barnstable. Each year, Barnstable Gateway works in partnership with Cape Cod Collaborative and Mass Maritime Academy to select high-achieving students for participation in the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program, also known as ASLP. This July, Grade 7th and 8th Grade students, recognized tonight, are invited to attend a 10th-day learning experience emphasizing project-oriented instruction, team-building, and leadership development. Barnstable represents the largest group of students from the Cape and Islands invited to attend ASLP. Interestingly enough, I'd like to thank and recognize the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Collaborative, who is here tonight, Paul Hilton, for his involvement and support for ASLP. And I'd like to also recognize all of the students that will be representing Barnstable and are invited to ASLP this summer. So if you are here, and I know that this is a busy time of year and there are some other events happening, but if you are here, when I call out your name, would you please come on up? And at the end, when everyone has been called, we will take a photo op for you. So Colton Basely, Sora Bartlett, Kayden Douglas, Benjamin Fletcher, Christopher Freel, Esther Huang, Philippe Lanaro, Jake Malloy, Thomas Montero, River Mulcarren, Declan O'Donnell, Aish Patel, Aiden Ramos, Holly Raitel, Riley Shepherd, Whitney Souza, Gavin Buono, Owen White, Eliza Bunshu, Ryan Fabiano, Grayson Hickey, Jonah Hughes, Hunter Malcolm, Braden Marshall, Lila Matherin, Elise Panan, and Addison Sears. Just so you can be in the limelight for a couple of seconds, and smile, be happy. We want to congratulate all of you. You are high-achieving, hard-working, and all of that is going to be realized and celebrated when you join this multi-week experience where you're going to live at Mass Maritime, work with others that share your passion and learning, and really, we hope you enjoy every moment. We'd like to thank Enoch Cobb Fund for the generous support in awarding four scholarships this year, and there were also two additional anonymous donors from our Barnstable community to help support students, in addition to multiple donors for ASLP in general, to really support the students in the attendance. So give them another round of applause. If you are a proud family member, please do not stand at the back and take a photo. Come on up and take a photo of your children.
Maybe we could get some distance.
You want to come, yeah. Why don't you come in closer?
Well, it's just so good to see you.
Get the school committee members in the picture.
It's about the kids.
Have a wonderful summer.
You can go back. Good.
Is FPS next?
Pardon me?
Is FPS on the docket next?
We have the Business Pathway in DECA tonight.
Okay.
Do you have your Future Problem Solvers here? You can call them up. They're actually not here, but if you don't mind, if I could take a second to... Absolutely. So in addition to the ASLP, with Gateway, we also oversee a program called Future Problem Solving, and each year, I like to recognize them. They're not here because they just landed in Indiana for the Future Problem Solving International Competition. And students from all over United States and the world are traveling to Indiana to apply their critical and creative thinking skills to this year's topic, air quality. The 11 Barnstable students who came in first place amongst their FPS peers at the Massachusetts State Bowl are Riley Shepherd, so some of the names you're going to hear, and that's why they weren't coming up tonight, Riley Shepherd, Ray Whitley, Addie Otto, Ratasi Sharon, Parker Hegarty Cook, Matthew Brancaccio, Elise Abreu, Sloane Contrino, Callie DeDecco, Lena Nickerson, and Carley Steenstra. Carley has also been asked to do the honor of representing our state as the flag bearer in the opening and closing ceremonies, which are a lot like the Olympics. Their coaches, Deb Contrino and Christie Sally, are joining them, and I wanted to let everyone know that the opening ceremony will be streamed live on the FPS PI YouTube channel from 9:45 to 11 o'clock on Thursday, in the morning, on Thursday, June 6th. Carley Steenstra is also, for the very first time, participating in the component FPS calls MAGIC, a multi-affiliate global issues, issues, problem-solving competition. This competition takes place onsite during the international conference and allows students from around the world to collaborate with one another. Competitors are randomly assigned to teams based on their age and division, whereas the other competitors have been competing all along with each other. She's taken on that added interest of competing with those that she's never met before. The MAGIC booklet has 16 challenges and 16 solution ideas and an underlying problem. All within a two-hour timeframe, they have to create an action plan to fully explain their top solution. Please extend our congratulations and wish these 11 superstars and their coaches the best of luck this week. So thank you.
School Committee Questions or Comments for Carrie Morse?
I just, excuse me, I just had to congratulate all the kids that are going. It's an awesome experience. A couple of my kids over the years have gone, and it was, they had never gone away to camp. They had never gone to anything, so it was kind of completely new. And it's science and fun, like you get to do all kinds of different things with boats, with nautical stuff, you get to do robotics, there's all kinds of different things in the camp. So I guarantee you, it's gonna be, you're gonna have a blast. Every year, the kids come, and it's always, they come back after and say, wow, that was just, and like I said, it was also something new for at least one of my kids, so it's definitely, you're gonna have a blast at it. But congratulations on getting the honor to be able to go.
And I would like to extend my congratulations to all the students as well. I know we have students who have enjoyed the experience and then applied to Mass Maritime or to other institutions to continue their science education. We're now at item 2.2, the Business Pathways Program in DECA. Andrew Vince.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Vince, and I am the curriculum coordinator for History, Social Science, and Business, Grade 612, here in Barnstable. I'm going to keep it brief. The students have, are beginning to be the ones presenting about their experience. But this year has been a year of wonderful growth in the Business Pathway, expanding the school store, expanding our production capacities, adding the last course in our High School of Business sequence, Management and Business Strategies, and then planning for Introduction to Accounting next year, and continuing to expand our offers. So I want to thank the School Committee, District, and Building Leadership. I want to thank Jackie Gillis, who has done so much work helping us with multiple grants to help fund this program. I want to, I want to thank the Enoch Cobb Fund as well, who has helped directly defray the cost for student participation in DECA. And I want to thank Mr. Jansen and the students for doing all their wonderful work. So without further ado, I'll introduce the students. They'll have their presentation, and yeah, they'll do some great stuff. And this is for a trip that DECA took to Anaheim, California, to compete in the international competitions for their, for their chapter. So we'll have Sloane Contrino, who now I know is in Indiana, Grace Curly, Morgan Becca, Becco, Teagan Garrity, Penny Barone, Sophie Anderson, Mila Valentine, Eric Aravijev, and Christiana Taylor. If you guys can come up, the stage is yours. And Mr. Jansen.
Hi, everyone. We have the...
Here's the remote for the presentation.
Okay. Hi, everyone. We're so excited to be here tonight to present to you our trip to Anaheim that we took during April break, or the week after this year. And here's our officer team for this year and some of our members from last year. Okay, here we go. To get started, we just want to focus on the significant growth between achievements and advancements that the DECA club has made at Barnstable High School and the Business Pathway overall. This trip immensely was influential in our learning process, and this event provided us with invaluable insights into global business practices, fostered a deeper understanding of competitive strategies, and allowed us to benchmark our skills against some of the best in the world. We arrived in Anaheim, and we were ready to go. We were so excited to just be there and meet new people. There was 23,000 DECA members which attended ICDCs. We had so many people to meet, so much to learn out of the 227,000 members total. 23,000 made it, which is great that we were able to attend. And then this is Morgan and Teagan presenting what they did.
Hello, I'm Teagan Garrity, and Morgan and I attended the event known as Elevate, and the main goal of this was just to extend our DECA program, find connections across the nation that had to do with how you can just kind of elevate your DECA membership and make it more than just like what it is, and kind of also use the ideas that we had and spread them across the nation as well. And we thought that one of the most influential things was when we were at, we were at our table with a bunch of random people that we met, and then we kind of dispersed among the whole entire room after getting speeches by very influential leaders. And we went to these tables, and there was different topics that we talked about, and some of them were fundraising, some of them were connections among students and trying to find different ways that people would want to join this club, and we came up with some very good ideas that would kind of just make this program better. One of the most influential things that we thought of was kind of elevating the fundraising by connecting the Unified Sports with DECA and having this big event in the Field House, which is one of the other schools in the nation. They brought this to our attention, and we thought of this as something that was super cool, and a lot of us are also part of Best Buddies and part of the Unified Sports Programs. So that was one of the things that by combining these two events, by having this, these sports, having the students have this big day of events, and getting to know different people, getting the word out there and fundraising for DECA as well, was just a great way to collaborate with different clubs and also fundraise on both parts.
Another thing we learned were the five stages of team development. There's five stages. The first stage is forming, where it's like the building stage, getting to know people, and like establishing ground rules and responsibilities and procedures, like finding out individuals' strengths and weaknesses, and just trying to like build from that. The second stage was storming, which is like the difficult stage. It's like where most conflicts and like a lot of businesses and like groups like never can recover after the storming stage. The third stage is norming, where they like try to come back together from the storming stage, and they appreciate their strengths and understanding like everybody's weakness to work better as a team. The fourth stage is performing, and it's just like where everybody builds their confidence and work together and problem-solve through the issues at task. And the fifth stage is adjourning, which goals are, goals are met, and wrapping up like the final task. Also there, we talked to like multiple different people. Like I remember, I talked to somebody all the way from Minnesota and like all the way from, I think, Florida or something like that, but it was really cool, like knowing, like finding out like different people, and we were all nervous, but after a while, we all got comfortable with each other, and it was a really good experience.
And that's just a few pictures of what we...
And besides Teagan and Morgan, the people that were competing in our school-based enterprises also attended workshops. Plenty of key takeaways: career development, school store tips, marketing skills, leadership, the intricacies of market research. We learned so much. We talked to so many people. We learned from professionals, mentors. It was really a collaboration of like-minded people who had passion for business and students that want to succeed in the business worlds. Just discussing and collaborating ideas with them was truly motivational, especially when we are planning to further grow our pathway this year. And yes.
Hi, my name is Mila Valentine. Me and Chrissy presented the Barnstable Hawksnest, which, this is our school-based enterprise in Barnstable High School, which we sell school apparel. And something that I took away from presenting in front of a judge was really how many like-minded students are also have the same interests as me. We presented, and we only had 10 minutes to prepare, and it really just helped me with real-world skills. And then for some things that we presented, we presented the growth of the Barnstable Hawk, the Barnstable Hawksnest, which has grown from $20,000 in sales last year to now $80,000 in sales. So we have had exponential growth this school year. And we also attended a school-based enterprise workshop where I, we were allowed to meet other people from other schools that have a school store, and just learning some of their procedures to better our school store for the future.
Hi, my name's Chrissy Taylor. So while we were presenting, we went in-depth with the custom designs of the Hawksnest. And the custom design area of the Hawksnest is a place where students can create designs that we can ultimately put on a piece of clothing, an article, and we can sell it to other students at the school store or the school. And it's a huge place where students can grow by learning the processes of how someone can take something and put it on an, an article of clothing, and it's a huge thing in our store, and it helps a lot of kids with the Business Pathway. And I know kids use it and take it, and they go into the real world, because I know certain kids have like clothing stores that they use this custom designs area to go and see their, how their items will work in the real world and how they will sell. And also, we have taken Barnstable items, and that's what we sell in the school store, and it's a really awesome place that you can just go and make a design and see how it will work, and I think it's a huge place where kids will take away how stores work and how custom designs can really help. And I think it's an amazing thing that we do at the Hawksnest.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Sloane, who's in Indiana for FPS, and I competed also in the school-based enterprise category. We presented the Kettle, which is our other school-based enterprise, which is a spirit box, basically a technologically advanced vending machine that sells school spirit items. For example, when you attend a sports game and you need a red bandana or a camo bandana to wear for the theme, you can get it right outside the gym at the Kettle. It's called the Kettle because a kettle is a swarming circle of hawks in regards to our school mascot. And we presented this to the judge. They loved it. It was all a learning process, and we are planning to expand and continue the Kettle next year. Another fun aspect of ICDCs was the pin trading, which is a DECA ICDC's tradition. Before the main award ceremony, all the people attending the competition gather outside the convention center with pins that they are given based on your state or country. And we were networking with students from China, India, Canada, trading pins with them, talking about their DECA chapter, their experience. It was so cool and so inspiring to see how this club that we have at Barnstable High School is running all over the world with students who are like-minded as us. You could collect them and trade them all meanwhile, networking and meeting people. It was so fun. And then at the end of the trip, we attended Universal. Universal Studios in Hollywood hosted our DECA night. They shut down the park for all of DECA members just to have for themselves, basically. It was truly amazing, and we had a great time. It was a great time to end the trip with. And we even made friends with the Spain chapter. And took a picture. Some goals that we have for the Business Pathway as a whole and our DECA chapter next year is a focus on the middle school and the 4-5 school, BIS and BUES. We want to connect the students that are unaware of what the Business Pathway holds and what they can succeed in at the high school before they enter the school, because most 8th graders are, we don't want them to be afraid to try something they have no idea about their freshman year or their 8th grade year, because they're going to a new school, so many more students. We want them to feel comfortable in our pathway. This creates community connection, passion and drive for the program at a young age, and knowledge of DECA and the Business Pathway is just something that we want to share with younger students in the other schools. We want to expand the program even further. And finally, to conclude the ICDC aspect before we hear from Eric, we just want to recognize that we learned so much, we networked, we connected with chapters from around the globe, and genuinely had a great time during this process. Want to give a huge thank you to our advisor, Mr. Jansen, who was always there to support us. He was instrumental in our growth and success, not only on this trip, but in past years, and especially this year, past year as a whole, and we deeply appreciate the opportunities and insights he gave us. We also want to thank the Enoch Cobb Fund for making this trip possible by funding it and supporting the Business Pathway in DECA as a whole. It's, we're truly grateful, and we appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. And now we will hear from Eric, who has much to share.
Hi, my name is Eric Aravijev. I just wanted to first take a moment to thank you for, for this opportunity to share what we have done. I guess I just wanted to take a step back and kind of share more candidly the impact that this program has had writ large on the students at Barnstable. Obviously, this trip was one aspect of that, but we've really had so many chances for students to grow and to learn throughout this program. So first, I guess I wanted to share, I guess, my own personal journey through this program. I started in 9th grade, which, if you can do the math, was a very different environment four years ago. I did actually join DECA my freshman year and actually also made it to the international competition. Unfortunately, it wasn't as amazing as this experience we just had in Anaheim. It was actually completely virtual, so I was presenting in front of a screen and then clicking Submit, and then a couple weeks later, I heard back the results. So definitely, we've taken, we've taken steps as a society to move away from that. But it was just an amazing experience as a 9th grader to really, without, I guess, as much support as, as we do have today, to really make it to that level. And in addition to that, I started taking business classes my freshman year as well, and through that, I was given opportunities that, again, I simply would not have had had Barnstable not had this pathway. I was able to compete in worldwide competitions and, and achieve distinction in those. And again, these are opportunities that students across our pathway and across our program have been able to achieve. I think last year, we had four kids, one kid going and presenting to executives, Ernst &amp; Young, these huge companies of, of business ideas that they developed inside of the classroom at Barnstable. And again, it's, it's through the support of our school and, and really the, the idea behind this to, to give students access to an educational program which really prepares them for the real world. I found a lot of students, they've entered DECA, including myself, really without any intention for pursuing business as, as an option for their career, but they go into a class and suddenly they're running a school store that's making 80 grand a year. Who knew? Like, they would never have had that opportunity if they weren't in, in our school and in our system. And I think even the other classes that, that teach, you know, the business fundamentals, I know as a state, we're becoming more and more concerned about financial literacy at large. There's a lot of activity in the legislature trying to pursue personal financial literacy. I don't know if you guys know, but Massachusetts was actually given an F grade, we're last place in the country in terms of financial literacy. So again, Barnstable has a huge advantage in terms of giving students a leg up and really giving them access to this knowledge that will serve them well should they decide to go to college, or should they decide to pursue business right, right out of the gate. So, and I think that's a huge differentiator that I've honestly seen throughout my four years at Barnstable. Unfortunately, I've witnessed that the academic culture writ large, I think, has been waning. There's a lot less student enthusiasm, I'm finding, for clubs and just to pursue excellence academically in general. And I think DECA and our Business Pathway really veers from that trend in general in terms of giving students opportunities that they simply never would have had. terms of giving students opportunities that they simply never would have had in, in a regular math class, in a regular English class. And giving them not only those opportunities inside of the classroom, but also outside. So just to end, at the start of this meeting, I heard the three pillars, commitment, collaboration, community. And I think those three words really describe what my experience has been throughout my four years at Barnstable and more specifically within this pathway. So thank you again for having us and we really, really appreciate your support.
Do you want a picture to show that you've, do you want a photo?
Yeah.
Come on up and take a picture. Oh, it's for the kids, yeah? If I could just add one last part to this, and it's kind of the fun part for me is, you know, the pathway is doing some amazing work and its effects are going well beyond its students that are in the pathway. We've got three students who are currently launching their apparel brand, one who just graduated, Thomas Lynch, and is super excited. And so they see all these things happening, you know, as they're going by the school store and they're like, ooh, I can maybe start my life and get things moving. And they have a, a goal in mind. So it's been a cool, cool experience in that respect. But these kids have been just phenomenal and they are leading the way, doing the work and, you know, taking charge. So thank you for letting us be here tonight.
School committee comments, questions, Jen?
Wow, what a bunch of well-spoken people. That's amazing. I, I think that Eric was actually on Youth Commission when I was on the town council. I think that we, we interviewed when I was part of that committee. But I, what I applaud about this is I was an entrepreneur for a while myself and it's a, a long slog, there's no doubt about it, when you're doing a brick and mortar business selling perishables. It was, it was a long, hard haul for me. And I love the entrepreneurial spirit of learning how to be able to make money and identify with a lifestyle that, that can make you very successful and learning the, the bumps in the road early on so you can avoid them later in life. I think it's really excellent. So it's a really cool pathway. Thank you.
Yeah. First of all, it's great that you guys all attended this in Anaheim. And as, as one school committee person, you know, I know it's always funding. Speak to me, I'll always support something like this, that's for sure. And I'll try to talk the rest of them into it. What a bunch of great speakers you are. Grace, you, you are such a talent. You seem to be the ringleader kind of, of public speaking, really, really talented. And I was just thinking, Tegan Morgan, you're talking about the, the, the five stages you guys learned. You probably should give a workshop to this group here and we could probably use the five stages to solve many of our issues. Myler and Chrissy, that's the school apparel store. I was in there maybe a week or so, I had a meeting in there, just went and grabbed a cup of coffee. And I couldn't believe how it changed. I, I taught at Barnstable High, I don't know, I retired maybe five years. And the school store was close to the main cafeteria, much smaller version of what it is now. I can't tell you how impressed I was, especially with all the gear. For Christmas presents, I always go in and buy some of the stuff and it's always the same shirt all the time. But I'm very excited about this Christmas because the apparel is, is fabulous. I can't wait. And lastly, Eric, you did such a great job of speaking for this program. And all of you guys are great examples of pursuing excellence and I'm very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Andre.
Yeah, for me to add on to what my colleagues have said, the, the growth of the, the school store, the Hawksnest, the kettle, didn't quite know what a kettle meant. Thought it had something to do with the culinary tradition, but you know, that it's the hawks flying together, so that's outstanding. In terms of apparel, I need to go and purchase some items. I, I see as I'm passing by the Dirty Stable shirt. And it's a nickname, the slogan I'm not necessarily familiar with, but I know it did lead some of our athletic teams to great success. And so that's what I wanted to touch on. I had the privilege of having some of the students in class when I was teaching at Barnstable years ago, eighth grade civics, it's been some time. But my point is, not only are you guys striving, succeeding and excelling in the classroom, the international component spoke to me, talking with students from China, talking with students from India. But back to the point, Eric actually interviewed me when I was running for school committee some years ago, got a chance to know him. And I, I know he's taking his talents to a school in New Haven, prestigious university in New Haven, where he's going to do very well. And he could easily take his talents to a school here in Massachusetts in Cambridge. But he chose the school in New Haven and, and, and it's going to be, it's going to be a great, I don't want, it's going to be a great success for him. Tegan and Morgan, Tegan, as well as being in DECA, was on our volleyball team. They made it all the way to the state championship game and it was a five-set thriller and, and we're going to be back in that game. And I know Tegan's coming back and we're going to be back in that game next year. And Morgan does outstanding things on, on the hardwood for our, our school. So my point is, these students are, are excelling in the classroom, on the fields of competition, and it's great to see. Eric, I did like your critique of, of our academic culture and where we could do better. I appreciate that because that's the type of information that we need to hone in on and make sure more kids are in this program, more kids are excelling at the level that you guys are. And you're going to continue to strive, work hard and, and be successful. We'd love to see it.
Excellent job. So I'm going to kind of go a little different way. So I went to the Business Pathway breakfast probably about a month ago. And I know we had a, with a bunch of business leaders and stuff. And I know there was some conversation about needing more mentors out in our business community. There's a lot of people here tonight. There's a lot of people that watch our school committee meeting. So what these kids need is more of our business leaders to come in and mentor them to, kind of like they did with DECA, or actually, before I completely mutilate this, could somebody come up and just describe what a mentor, the business mentors from our community kind of do? And I, I remember having a conversation about how we need more. So could somebody just kind of come down and say what they would do and how it all works? Sorry.
So the business mentors usually come in about once a month and sometimes we have projects to present for them. And they're from various career paths. I know one business mentor that came into the marketing and finance class was an investment banker. So the business mentors critique our projects, give us feedback and also give us tools if we want to maybe be an investment banker or if we want to pursue a specific career in business. So they're really helpful in the classroom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Like I said, I, it's just another way for, I know people are always looking to be in our schools and it's just a different way of doing it, working with the Business Pathway and, and helping our kids become future leaders or entrepreneurs or whatever the kids, we just heard them talk. So that's kind of my spiel on it. But thank you very much. Congratulations.
And there's not much more I can add, except that every time I have the pleasure of attending one of your presentations, I'm amazed at how professional and polished you are and what a wonderful job everybody does. I appreciate the fact that you've acknowledged your teachers, all the teachers that support any of these extracurricular activities are going above and beyond. And I know that they enjoy doing it, but it's always nice to hear the thank you. At this time, did anybody else want anything to say? Okay. I'm going to pause for a minute before we go on to the student envoy report. I know some people have come for the presentations and have other obligations. We have some people standing who may want to move around and sit down and you're all being so polite. So I'm going to give people an opportunity, if you're interested in calling it a night, you can get up and go. If you want to stay, that's great. And those of you who don't have seats, if you are interested, you can locate a seat. And we, we have plenty of seats if anybody standing wants, wants to move. Okay. All right. Riley, you ready for the student envoy report?
Yes. Sorry. First of all, I wanted to just say, like, as a student looking on from like the Business Pathway, but like I'm not in it on the ads. Yeah, it should be. From the outside, it, I truly admire what they do. Like that, I think it's so cool when I see like them building, like from the old school store to the new one. It truly is so cool. So I really sleep almost not here, so it's just me today. End of school year, so lots going on. Five sports made playoffs. All sadly got out first round, but making playoffs, good. And then girls golf got fifth at states. Graduation was a huge success. We had speeches by three students and they were all so good, so like well spoken. Along with that, prom and after prom had great reviews. I heard so many good things about the prom, after prom and how fun it was and the prizes that were provided. Yesterday, there was the junior awards ceremony, which they handed out book awards and academic achievements. Many colleges sponsored the book awards and that was really cool to see all the scholarship and like wonderful things that the junior class has done. And then student ambassadors went over to the BIS Monday and Tuesday to present to the seventh graders about what Step Up Day will be like and what the high school is like in general and answer their questions. It was a great way to like introduce a whole new grade back into our school. And Step Up Day is Wednesday, so we're going to tour them around, show their classes and there's, get them more comfortable with the school so it's less nerve-wracking when you go in. Like, I didn't have a Step Up Day because mine was COVID and I know what it was like to be there and be so lost. So I'm happy that I can provide like a little bit of comfort and that our club can provide a little bit of comfort in response to that. Class selections are also this week and next week, they run into next week. So many good applicants are running for new positions and yeah, that's basically it. Lot of good end of year stuff going on, finals are next week. So yeah.
Questions or comments?
Everybody good?
All right. Thank you, Riley. All right. Item 3.2, approve Barnstable Public School Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Minute, Meeting Minutes from March 25, 2024.
Move to approve Barnstable Public School Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Minutes for March 25, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, approve Barnstable Public School Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Meeting Minutes of May 15, 2024.
Move to approve Barnstable Public School Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Minutes for May 15, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.4, approve Barnstable Public School Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Meeting Minutes of May 22, 2024.
Move to approve Barnstable Public Schools Collective Bargaining Negotiating Team Minutes for May 22, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.5, approve school committee meeting minutes, May 1, 2024.
Move to approve school commite, school committee meeting minutes for May 1, 2024.
I'll second.
Movements made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item 3.6, approve special school committee meeting minutes, May 20, 2024.
Move to approve special school committee meeting minutes for May 20, 2024.
Second.
Movements made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.7, public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Have anything? Sure. Sarah is, has something to say.
Thank you. Thank you to the chair for allowing me to jump in here. I want to notice that there are numerous people wearing t-shirts in the room and clearly we have a lot of people in tonight's audience in support of the Taylors. Any educator, I think, would be honored to be receiving such an outpouring of support from the community. I have received several personal letters and statements. I've read them all and responded in acknowledgement of each one. So I feel like I might be able to anticipate some of the comments, but certainly you all have the opportunity, as outlined by the chair, to, to share your, to share your feelings. Not necessarily sure though about your expectations for a response from me as superintendent. The chair has outlined what the school committee does with public comment, but I wanted to explain a little bit about my limitations. I think it's important to be forthcoming and share that I'm legally bound to confidentiality protections and there's very little I can share regarding an ongoing personnel matter. I do see some students in the room who are current students of ours and I know that people in the community and students wanted to talk with me. While I value the voice of stakeholders, students in particular, I felt that I could not do so productively, given this being a confidential personnel matter, generating further frustration. In a general sense, related to personnel matters, investigations and decision-making, these are not easy and are some of the weightiest decisions I have to make. As our leader, our work is inherently accomplished through the work of others. I will always frame this work, putting students first, starting with their health and safety. As a teaching institution and to fulfill our mission, we must put students' academic and social emotional growth at the center. I'll conclude that there's a well-defined process from investigating thoroughly to whatever an outcome comes to be by which due process rights are protected. This process is still underway and it takes a long time, which I know is frustrating. These protections are particularly true for employees who are members of a union. As part of the process, employees have a right to meet directly with me. While most of you do not know me, there are some in this room who do, and I'd like to think that I've proven during my time to be measured and thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you. Before...
Kathy, I'm also, I just wanted to say...
Andre, point of order, you need to wait, okay? I would like, before you speak, we're going to hold public comment.
Yes.
There's no debate. And I would like to give an opportunity for the people with young children in the audience, if someone wants to speak. It's dinnertime, we've been here for an hour. I'd like to give them the opportunity to go first. Everybody's good? Okay. All right. And please remember to state your name and the town that you're in.
Kathy, I, I did, I did have a, I did have a statement and I just wanted to clarify a statement that was made. Public comment is...
Andre, point of order. You don't have the floor.
Okay.
He can, I would like to, I will repeat what public comment, we're in the public comment section of the meeting and I'm going to repeat that during public comment, people will have three minutes, there will be no debate and there will be, will, will listen. And then after public comment, if you take a look at the agenda, school committee meeting members, each school committee meeting member will have an opportunity to speak. And at that time, I'm reserving my statements. Everybody else here has to follow the agenda.
Kathy, you, you allowed the superintendent to speak. I wanted to clarify a statement by the superintendent, which was, yes, public comment is 30 minutes, but there is the opportunity for us to go beyond 30 minutes, as I see many people have taken time out of their busy day. So I didn't want anybody to feel if after 30 minutes, we had not, that everybody will not have... I wanted to clarify, Kathy. So, you let the superintendent speak, and I wanted to clarify a statement made by the superintendent. Thank you so much.
All right. And just for the...
Can I speak?
Just for the record, people need to be respectful. One person speaks at a time. And I did mention that the chair will also allow public comment to go beyond the 30 minutes at my discretion. I have every intention to give people the opportunity to speak, as long as people take three minutes, and that you are listening to whoever has the podium at the time. All right, go ahead.
Because there's so many people here, I will keep my comments short, and I plan to do that in the first place.
Can you please state your name and town?
I just wanted to say good evening to the school committee members. My name is Dr. Deborah Dagewan, and I am here today to speak not on behalf of what's been happening here or what's occurred. I'm here to speak about recruiting and retaining minority educators and employees. This is a town that's had people who have been here for hundreds of years, Cape Verdeans, Native Americans, and we go to many of our municipalities, and we do not see us, or there's one of us. We have an influx of Brazilians now and Haitians and others. As a former school committee member myself, I respect what you do. I know how tough that is. But we need to find a way to retain our minority educators and employees. Over the past few months, we have lost employees of color. And we have been, as a recruiter, along with John Reed and George Spivey from Falmouth, we all recruited some of the minority educators that you have in your system right now, as well as me helping to recruit minority educators and employees in Falmouth. I feel that I understand, because I've been there, why we're losing them and what we need to do to retain them. I'm not going to speak on that tonight, because that's, it's, it just, I'd much rather find another time to speak maybe with the leadership, to share from my experience as a school committee member, but also as a town counselor. As a school committee member, we've had to make some tough decisions when we were there, and you have some tough decisions to make. But we have to, we have to change and find a way to hold on to those, to be more diversified, and find a way to retain them. We're losing. Myself and many other older educators were part of the school systems here on the Cape, and we're losing them. We retired out now. We need young people. And the families that have recently been targeted, for whatever reason, and I'm not going to speak to that, these are the kinds of people that we want, who look after our kids, who look after all of the children. As an educator myself, I'm not here for just kids of color. I'm here for all of the children. Ninety-nine percent of the children I have taught at Girls Latin School in Boston, some of the best and brightest students in the city of Boston. Here on the Cape, ninety-nine percent of them have been students who are white. And I treat them the same. I respect them, and they respect me. And we have to find a way to recruit and retain, and I'd like to be a part of that. We have a DEI committee that needs to be, needs to be more involved in helping. We want to help. We want to help, but we want to keep these valuable people who look after us and who have been in our community and have worked very, very hard. I know it's three minutes, I just want to say hello to Jen, who I know, Mike, of course, and Kristen, I've known for many, many years. Thank you, and keep up the work that you're doing.
Dr. Dagewan, which town are you in for the minute?
I'm from Hyannis.
Thank you, and thank you for your comment. Anybody else?
Hi. How are you? My name is Maria Deluzreid, and I am one of the retired teachers from Barnstable. I've been in Barnstable, was a Barnstable student, and was one of the first students to come back to be a teacher for the middle school. And it was a pleasure to be able to work alongside John Reed and help recruit with my father, the former president of the NAACP, who would probably, is turning over in his grave right now, watching our young people have to go such, against such odds. The Taylors are wonderful, wonderful teachers and people. They have done more for those students than many of the teachers I can think of. And I've been in the system for 35 years, and I've watched them grow as young teachers and parents and lovers of what they do. And to come from a city, New York City, and to make this place their home and give up what they've done for the students of Barnstable has to weigh a little bit. And it should weigh a lot. And yes, things were done in ways that shouldn't have not have been done, but to strip someone of such commitment, love, concern, compassion, educational welfare, mental health welfare, not only of the children, but of parents as well. I hope that you consider well, and it shouldn't be swept under the table, but it's sure the heck should not be swept away. Have a wonderful evening. We have to go to cheerleading, where Tanya is going to be cheering and coaching, so...
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Julie Allen, I'm from Hyannis. I'm actually here to speak about Barnstable Community Innovative School. I'm an advocate for my seven-year-old daughter and her peers. And I have, if you could raise your hand, that you're here to support BCIS. So, I know that's one issue that's come up. When my father passed away, he was a 51-year educator at Community College. He said, please make sure, he passed away when my daughter was 10 weeks old. Before he did, he said, "Her education is the most important thing you can give to her." And with that, and coming from a future of, coming from people with an education background, our children, education is the future. That's one gift that we can certainly give our children. And coming from off Cape, from Gardner, my husband's from New York, I didn't know about the school system here at all. We moved here because we had to. I found out about BCIS from somebody at the dog park, investigated a little bit, and here we are. She is a first grader, thriving, doing a wonderful job there. And the community that I see, and isn't that one of the pillars, is community? So, one of that pillars, and seeing how she is, and seeing that when they had the project-based learning, and they had the few nights, one a couple of weeks ago, if you had been there and you could just feel that in the air, the teachers and the parents interacting, the kids, and the kids saying, "Come on, come deck," or whomever the guardian was, "Come look at this," and they were so excited, and they're learning so much. And I can even see, as an educator, having taught in a university, and as a nurse ER educator and trauma educator in Boston, Colorado, I can just see that we are setting such a great base for them. Please support them. Please give them that light of their future, and don't burn out that light for them. I appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Karen Cahill, I live in Hyannis, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of BCIS. I emailed Dr. Hearn and Kathy and Mike, and I appreciate all of your responses. And I also want to thank you all for having the workshop last week. I think that was such a huge opportunity for the parents who were able to attend and for us to hear from the teachers and to hear from you all when it comes to the question of whether or not we're renewing the innovation plan for BCIS. I was so excited to have the opportunity to send my six-year-old, who's in kindergarten there now, to this school and to allow them the opportunity to participate in the project-based learning that they have been doing there. And yeah, I just think, you know, we went to the project-based learning event a couple of weeks ago, and it was incredible. There were so many families there, it was packed, you could barely move in there, but it was so much fun. And I also, you know, my son was just so excited to show me everything. He said, "I want to show you my bird book that they've been working on." And we got to see, like, caterpillars that were forming a chrysalis, and kind of go through these stages and see how the school had really focused on science and environmental science, and that was just so incredible. So, I just want to thank you for doing that workshop, for listening to us as a community. And I just urge you to really take what the teachers shared with us last week. I was just so grateful to hear from them and hear their passion about remaining in innovation school. And I'm just so excited for my kids to go to that school and be taught by these people who care so much, and they care so much about the education of these little tiny people. And thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Canadian Marries. My name is Danielle Hill. I am a 30-year resident at Barnstable. I am not an educator, and I'm not a graduate at Barnstable High School, but I am the mother of seven, and I am the foster mother or pseudo-parent to nineteen others. And I can speak personally to the direct effect that the Taylors have had on the students of Barnstable High School. I have no less than eight individual students that call me mom that have graduated from that high school as a direct result of their involvement with Hope and Aliq Taylor. I had a child who was inpatient hospitalized for three months in her junior year of high school. Hope advocated for special education accommodations to help her get over the finish line and graduate on time with the rest of her class. I have a child who didn't graduate high school until he was 20 years old because Aliq Taylor refused to give up on him and let him quit. Hope and Aliq Taylor each have 29 years committed to this school district. They have had a profound impact on being the net that catches the children who are slipping through the cracks. I hate to think about what the environment for children of color will be in this school district without the presence of Hope and Aliq Taylor. That being said, I want to speak for the entire community with regard to our support for the Taylors. They are a huge part of the fabric of the community as a whole, and I want to rely on some data that is concerning. Forty-nine percent of the students in Barnstable High School are non-white students. That is a mirror of the district. So, 50% of the district students are non-white students. Eleven point five percent of the staff, not the licensed educators, the staff at Barnstable High School are non-white. Eleven point five. How does that represent the students of our district? It gets even worse at the district level, because that amount drops to 7.5%. It is fair to say, over 29 years of education, that Hope and Aliq Taylor have directly impacted more than 6,000 students coming through the Barnstable school system. That puts them directly impacting 12% of the students who have passed through that district in the last 29 years. They need, in order to maintain the right trajectory, we need to retain the educators of color. Now, when I refer to those numbers, 11.5 and 7.5%, that is staff, that is not licensed educators. I know for a fact that the licensed educator numbers are far lower, but they weren't readily available when I did my research. I just want to say that the community as a whole feels very strongly about the Taylors' impact in the community, and we wholeheartedly support them and hope that whoever has the ability to retain them as educators in this community takes the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Denise Harris. I'm a resident from Barnstable. I'm not here to speak about the minorities or the numbers, because the Taylors, I mean, everything Danny said was good. But the Taylors, all the students as a whole, every color, every race, every freshman, junior, senior, they are there for the kids 100%. I actually have two, I have one that's a junior now, but my oldest son is Devin Harris, who holds the record of perfect attendance. I know it's been through the school committee. And I have to say that even with that, the Taylors gave him so much support. They knew that was his goal. And as much I pushed him, they pushed him as well. I don't know that he would have been able to do it without their support. Devin's father, he's in the military, so, you know, he was raised as an only child. And when I couldn't put on his tie or when I couldn't do things, he felt more comfortable to go to Aliq Taylor and both of them. But for most students, I mean, it's just, they're like a second family. And like I said, and that goes for every race. I know graduation and prom, the kids were so heartbroken that they couldn't be there. And that's a testament in itself, that they would rather spend their graduation day worrying about the Taylors than enjoying it themselves. I think that says just everything in itself. I know a mistake was made, and, you know, repercussions have to be given, that's understandable. But at the end of the day, I just hope whoever makes the final, you know, decision kind of looks beyond that and looks at what will happen if they're gone, more than the mistake that was made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lori Crowley. I'm from Hyannis. And I had something else to say on the impact they've had on not just our school and our community, my family alone. I have a 43-year-old to a 26-year-old, four girls. I have six grandchildren, one 19, down to three and a half months. So, it hurts me to think that my next grandchild coming to the school might not see them there. But I want to, when I heard Danny give the statistics, what really resonated with me is the racism that goes on in that high school. And if you don't think it doesn't, ask any one of these students here, because I'm sure they'll tell you all about it. My grandchild has, and some of my other grandchildren that are younger. So, it's so important to have people that look like them, they see them walking down the hall, and they feel safe. They have somewhere to go. They have someone protecting them, someone who looks like them, and they need them. So, you students out here, don't be afraid. Come on up and speak.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashani Baxter. So, I'm here to say the impact that the Taylors had had on me since high school. I graduated Barnstable High School in 2021, and I'm graduating college next year. And both Ms. Taylors have done so much to help me in high school when I was struggling at my lowest. Like, if it wasn't for the Taylors, I probably wouldn't graduate high school or even graduate in college next year. Like, having someone who represents me as a colored person at Barnstable High School has made so many difference with me and my friends. Like, I understand there was a mistake that was made, but at the end of the day, those Taylors don't look at us as students, they look at us as their kids at the end of the day. All of us, not just like a person, oh, a kid, as their own children. Most teachers don't do that, but the Taylors will. The Taylors make sure you're okay, talk to you, and make sure your grade's good, so you can have a better education. And I believe that if the Taylors are still at Barnstable High School, students will graduate, and a colored student like me would graduate and have a future, like, because of the support of Taylors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Everton De Castro, and I'm here also to talk about the impact the Taylors had on me. If I get emotional, it's not a sob story, it's just gonna come out naturally. But after graduation, Barnstable, we get our disciplinary track record. And when I opened my discipline from eighth grade down, I was a pretty bad kid. Like, a lot of, a lot of talkback, a lot of those things of that nature. And eighth grade was the first year I met Ms. T. And I met her because of my friend Darren, because I was skipping lunch all the time. And the day I met her, she wasn't, she didn't come at me like a kid, like, disciplined, like, you should be punished automatically. She came at me warming, telling me, "This isn't right, and this isn't the way you should go, and this isn't the way you should do things." And ever since then, every hardship she's helped me with. I had, I had a big turning when my transition back to Barnstable, because I used to go to Sturgis. And Ms. T helped me with all of that. Every struggle I had with teachers, when I needed a place to talk, I had something legally go off, and the whole... go, go off, and the whole time, she was there to support me, and Aliq Taylor too, he was there to support me through everything, through all the hardships, through all the thoughts that I had. They were always there, and they took me as family, and even now, I consider them as family. Graduation, prom, it wasn't the same without them. It, it felt like a piece was missing from a lot of us, and, sorry. And they really play a role in a lot of our lives. A lot of people, when I posted on my story for people to show up, a lot of people were concerned. People care about them because of the impact that they changed in people's lives. And all I, all I would want for is just to consider one more time, because, one, I wouldn't be here without them, and two, I wouldn't have graduated without them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Renee King, resident of Centerville, a retiree from a major information technology company. Upon retiring from this company in 2015, I had a tremendous opportunity to jumpstart the YMCA Achievers Program, and Jen was one of the amazing volunteers that helped me with this program. This program for the YMCA is over 60 years old. It was initially called the Black Achievers Program. However, in the corporation that I worked for, we wanted this program to be broader, we wanted it to be achievers, and so when I took the role of the YMCA, I said, I need to make sure that every kid, and this program was for a first generation, to can, to pursue education beyond high school. And I made it a prerequisite to take on this amazing role, that everyone would have a seat at that table. So 80% of the students were first to pursue education beyond high school, and 20% were students that had parents or grandparents that had gone to school. It was the most culturally diverse achievers program across the United States. That program, the Achievers Program, is still in existence. I will say this, that program would not have a jumpstart if it had not been for the Taylors. The Taylors knew the students that were not seen. I'll give you one student in particular. This student was in all honors classes, receiving all As, and never did any educator introduce them to what most students would be introduced, AP. And that student would have come out of high school with college credits. That student was not seen. There are inequities in our school, I'm not blaming anyone, but I am saying that a student needs to see educators that look like them, to realize that they too can achieve or overachieve the same things that are before them. And I will say, firsthand experience in that school system every day for five years, if it weren't for the Taylors, many of those students in this program, there are over hundreds, I see a few parents of students here, I see a few of those students here, they had never had an opportunity to pursue education beyond high school, and that is a testament for the work above and beyond that the Taylors provided. So under this circumstance, I hope you hear all of these cases, and work, I'm willing to work with you, I'm willing to work with the town to see how we can remedy this situation and fill some of the gaps that we have in our amazing town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Thomas. I just graduated from Barnstable High School, and I'm here to just speak my mind on the situation and just tell you guys a little bit about what the Taylors have done for me and multiple people in the community. My first day in the high school was not what you would say a normal day. My morning started off with an argument with my father, and I, I got into something with the police and was brought into school by a police officer and brought to Ms. Taylor. She currently, before me, had my siblings and some of my cousins, and sorry if I sound like I'm about to cry, it's just, you know, it's a little emotional situation. And from that day on, she took me in like a son, and I had no idea who this woman was besides that she was a family friend. And she took me in like I was a son, and she practically raised me all throughout high school, her and Aliq Taylor. And it just, high school wouldn't have been what it was without them. They stuck their neck out for me time in and time out, when I was doing good, doing bad, whatever it was, they were always there for me at my highest and my lowest, and they're like that with everyone. I can say this with 100% confidence, that in this room, they would stick their neck out for anyone in this room to make sure that this town is good, or if anyone, you know, is good mentally, physically, anything. And I just don't want to say too much and sound like a sob story, but that's just what I would like you guys to know about the Taylors and that this town and everyone in this room loves them dearly.
Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name is Ronnie Ferguson. I coach at Barnstable High School, I coach basketball and I coach football there. My first opportunity to coach was with Mr. Taylor, he gave me a great opportunity. I just really want to talk about second chances and mistakes. I know everyone wants to talk about being reprimanded and having to deal with issues after a mistake, but when you're allowed a second chance, which I made when I was in high school, listening to these guys here, doing something that was wrong that I thought was right at the same time, and it could have really put me off in a different track, but knowing at 25 and 26, that mistake was still going to follow me through all my young adulthood, Mr. Taylor was able to give me an opportunity to coach and progress and do some of the things that I've been wanting to do for Barnstable. I live and wear him, I just like ran from practice for my son, but I live and wear him, and I drive my son to Barnstable every day, or he stays at my aunt's house half the week. My daughter will go to Barnstable, and it's not, for me personally, it's not so much about what they represent to the community, I think they know what they represent, they know what they do. They don't do things for people to pat them on the back or for people to have a great opinion about them, they just do things out of the kindness of their heart. So when I got the phone call to be able to coach with Mr. Taylor, it was more about the kindness of his heart and being able to extend the olive branch to bring someone back to Barnstable, someone who cared about Barnstable, loved it, and would teach some of these guys that I've coached about having more pride about being from Barnstable. And I think that's something, when you notice the progression of each kid and watching these two boys here go from their sophomore years, freshman years, to being able to graduate, it's not so much about who they are as people then, than to watch them graduate and go through their trials and tribulations and see who helped them along the way. During that process in the last four years, I've known the Taylors since I was a kid. They've been in this school system since I was in high school, years and years ago, but they've always kind of kept the same mindset of trying to extend the olive branch. So to be able to see that olive branch still be extended 25 years later, be in the same areas, deal with the same people, smile every day, care about kids on such a personal level, and know that no matter what, they can be there for them, they can call for them. I've spent hours on the phone with Mr. Taylor talking about kids who might have been in trouble or different reprimands they needed during basketball and things like that, but we also knew that, like, if we kick this kid off of the team, what is he gonna do? What is he gonna represent? What kind of trouble is he gonna go out and get in, especially being in the middle of Hyannis with nothing to do and not caring about school, all right? I think knowing how much he particularly cares about the community and cares about the kids, we talk about the progression of them and how they can be as young men. We talk about what some of the females are going to be able, are they going to be solid moms, are dads going to be dads? It's more about who they're going to be down the long run. So a lot of people have talked about mistakes they've made and different issues that they've had. I don't think anybody's perfect. I know for sure, I can stand here and tell you that I'm not perfect, but I grind my butt off, I work hard, I try to be a providing father, a coach, a business owner, and do different things and still find ways to drive over that bridge every day in the summer and sacrifice my time, sacrifice my energy, sacrifice family time, and I know that the Taylors do all that plus more because they're close. So I just wanted to kind of just say that mistakes happen, mistakes may, but it really doesn't define who they are or what they represent to the community. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Martin from Marston's Mills, and I want to speak to the BCIS issue. I have a granddaughter, Malia, who's in kindergarten, and I have three Barnstable graduates. Three of my kids went through the Barnstable system. They have a good education, two have masters, one has a bachelor's degree, and I, and we live in Marston's Mills, so they would go to that school. But Malia's my only granddaughter, and I'm raising her, and I decided to do some research about the STEM. And teachers, I talked to teachers that were retired, and they said to me, all teachers want to teach STEM, it's the best way for children to learn. So, you know, I drive her to school every day. She has grown immensely. Academically, she, you know, she's a regular kid, there's nothing, you know, she's just average, but she's doing beautifully academically. But socially and the atmosphere that she's in, because that school is a loving school, she is growing, she's learned to forgive people when they've done things to her. She had, has worked, learned conflict resolution with some kids. She sat down with the teacher and they resolved their feelings. One day she told me she was a five on the scale. I had to learn what that was. She had anger about something someone did. What can I do about that, Coco? And I said, we'll go, we'll tell the teacher, and the teacher sat down with them and the two of them and worked it out. They're not best friends, but they respect each other. That's what happens in that school. I've been associated with that school since Glenn Anderson was the principal. It's, was always a school where we walk in and there's a different feeling, and I would hate to think that, and, you know, because of school choice, I can take her there, that losing the charter, I will not be able to bring her to that school, because that's where she belongs. She's, she can speak a few words of Portuguese, I mean, she's Jamaican Indian, and it's like, she's with kids of her color. She went to a private preschool where she was the only child that was brown. That school is where she belongs. That's a school, that's a wonderful school, and I just have to say that. I want her to go back there and finish there, and to support the charter. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Franco. I'm from Hyannis, and I have a lot of, I consider family members here tonight. From a biracial family, I have three daughters that attend Barnstable High School. I don't know any of the Taylors except for Hope. I met her about two and a half years ago, and when I met her, I was very impressed with her. I was impressed at the fact that she took time to listen. She took time to listen to my kids. Being a single dad for 10 years and an old man has been very difficult for me, and I have to say that Hope Taylor has been an inspiration for me and my children to keep going. That's about all I have to say, because, because I don't really know the whole thing that's going on here tonight, but I do know that she's a fine person. I worked in human services for 20 years for private schools, I worked for Worcester State Hospital, I worked for Deveraux School in Rutland, I worked for Stetson School, and I was a supervisor at all of those places. But now I'm getting older, and I do have memory problems, and I just have to say that she's been a crutch for me, and to lose her from, from our school would be a terrible thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Steinheuber, and I am a parent of two children at Barnstable High School. I just want to start by saying that I'm so incredibly touched to hear all these stories tonight, because I do not know the Taylors. Everything I've heard has been incredibly supportive. From what I understand, they've put together programs that have been in, in the schools for 30 years, and I am a huge supporter of teachers. I've been a PTO president in my kids' elementary school, and I see some of my favorites here tonight. But I do have to say that my daughter's best friend was one of the students left behind in Boston, and I needed to come here tonight to be in support of them. It was a very distressing situation for them. They were left not at a different school or at Sandwich High School or, they were left in Boston. These two students are also black students. So I came down because I heard wind of a lot of this happening, and I am under no, I'm not trying to push for anyone to be fired, I would hate to see anything like that, but I think what I've heard about is a suspension or something along the lines. And I just want to say that I come from the time, by the way, of Barnstable High School students who had John Reed, right? So I get the importance of somebody like that, I do. But these students were scared, they were left in Boston, and I believe that if nothing else, a strong and solid change needs to be made about how we go on these field trips, taking attendance. I've been told that students approached these teachers and said, has anybody seen them? But they still came home without them. So I would just like to say that I, I don't want to see anything overly severe or something that is going to change all these people's lives for the negative, but my girl was changed for the negative on that trip. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I am her daughter, and again, one of my best, best, best friends.
Can I just get your name?
Mary Steinheuber. My dearest friend, left behind, I heard about it since the second it happened. Boston is not just like an easy place where you can, as a teenage girl, it's not, it's not easy to just be left behind like that. They went, to my knowledge, as my friend had stated, the bus went down the road to get food. Multiple times, the students asked, where are these two girls? They pointed to random girls in the back.
I, point of order, I just, if you can just speak either, you know, generally, you can continue to speak, we have to be very careful about confidential personnel issues.
Okay.
But that's okay.
All right. But yeah, there were still multiple instances, people were trying to figure out where these people were, didn't seem to really be concerned, and left them over an hour away from home. If I, I know if I had the chance to go and pick them up, if anyone could, they would have, but traffic isn't fun, I think you all know that, and it's a very long drive. With something so last minute, when teachers were supposed to be taking care of not just my friends, but everyone else on that bus, they were supposed to do that, that was their responsibility, and they managed to not do that correctly. I'm, I'm just, I think we should all be confused, regardless of what you think may be going on, why the Taylors are being blamed for this. No matter what, we should be 100% thinking about, you know, the, the actual people that were left behind and not just the people that actually made the mistake. We need to be, we, they need to take responsibility, and, I mean, I feel like I'm, it's kind of common sense, in my opinion. That's all I have to say, but.
Thank you.
First, my name's Alan Wright. I'm a former graduate of Barnstable High School. Taylors were my teachers. I just want to make this known, and I'm not trying to reb- Um, I just want to make this known and I'm not trying to rebut anything that she just said. However, um, the amount of support that is here is an testament to who the Taylors are. The Taylors know who they are automatically. Back in the 90s, late 90s, early 2000s, I'm not giving my age or nothing. But if it wasn't for the Taylors, we wouldn't have, some people, a lot of the people that are here right now would not have gotten off to certain places. Uh, there was a group that they created called the Amani Club. Um, I'm sure a lot of people have remembered the Amani Club, but they took us up to Boston. We've gotten to Boston plenty of times. I remember Andre being on one of those trips with us. And, you know, the things that, that has happened, I'm not saying that, that it should be forgiven. I'm not saying that it is something that, that shouldn't be thought about. However, mistakes are made. Mistakes are made within the community. Mistakes are made with presidents. Mistakes are made, period. One should not define what happens to people based upon mistakes that can be corrected, forgiven, et cetera. The Taylors have taken everybody that I know in here that are upperclassmen from me. I can look at everybody and wave and know that at one point we were all in school together and it wasn't just like that was the upperclassman, I was the freshman, I was the senior. This was my brother, this was my sister, regardless of what race, creed, or color they were. And that was because of the Taylors. The Taylors made sure that we came together as one. We stuck together. You, you guys started this, this meeting talking about pillars. Well, the Taylors are pillars. They're pillars to this community. They're pillars here to a lot of people that are here. One thing I, I, that resonates to me is I have a, a classmate who passed away. I looked to beside me, her daughter is here. Her daughter is one that was taught by the Taylors as well. And if her mother was here, she would be standing with me. That resonates big time because not only am I a former student, but now our kids are students or former students of the Taylors. So the impact that the Taylors have already made just from myself on down to other people's children and their children's children, for them to be not here within the school would be detrimental to Barnstable. I hope you guys take that into consideration because we really need the Taylors, community involvement, and the pillars that they are to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Hardy. I live in Hyannis. I've been a Hyannis resident now for 30 years. Um, I've been a coach. I volunteer, run a lot of different nonprofit organizations. Some of you guys have coached your kids, so I know some of you. Um, my son Tommy has, has gotten a lot of help from the Taylors as long as, as well as our, three of my other kids who have graduated. Tommy is a freshman this year, going to be a sophomore next year. He was here tonight. He had to leave to get to boxing practice, um, but he wa, he was really upset. He wanted to stay. It was just taking a long time. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking, but after, I know you've heard a lot of stories about the Taylors and you're kind of getting an idea of their character. I've personally witnessed them for 20 years volunteering at every sports event, after school. They put themselves out there. They really put themselves out there, do the extra. And I wasn't going to speak, but I heard one of these young ladies from Decker have a comment and what she said was, you know, they're trying to get more kids to get involved and not be afraid to get involved, not be afraid of failure. And that, that's what the Taylors do. They try to get people to be involved in the community, to do, do, go outside of their little bubble and do other things. And the first time that I know of that the Taylors make a mistake, if we throw them to the wolves, what are we really teaching our kids? Don't get involved because, you know, if you fail, we're going to chastise you for that. You're going to be punished for that. You know, let's work with them. Let's try to see how we can solve this, how we can resolve it and keep, keep our community together. The Taylors do a lot for the community. Um, not just the kids of color. My kids, white kids, they've helped every one of my kids. Um, you know, so they help everyone, you know? And that's, that's really what I have to say is let's, let's lead by example. Let's teach these kids that when you do get involved and you do put yourself out there, we got your back. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ali Sundlar. Um, sorry. Um, I live in Brewster, but I graduated from Barnstable High School in 2020. Um, and I'm one of those white kids that the Taylors helped out, um, a lot in my life. Um, I've known them since I was literally zero years old. I was a child and through my entire life, I don't remember much growing up, but you know, I remember going to the Taylors and I remember, my best friend is their daughter, Tanaya. And they, no matter what you look like, they just, they're family. That's how they treat everyone. Um, and when I was in high school, I had a really tough transition. I, uh, school choice to Barnstable. I grew up in Yarmouth Port. Um, and when I got to the high school, I was so scared. And I remember, I didn't know many people, um, but I knew Hope Taylor because I knew them growing up and I was just so happy to put in House D when they were houses, not hubs. And, um, was that my three minutes? Oh, that's okay. Um, and, um, I went to her office and I said, I have no idea what's going on. I have no idea where I'm supposed to go. And the bell had already gone off. I was going to be late for class. I just accepted it. And she walked me to Ms. Storey's science class. Um, that's just like one of the smaller things that she's done for me, but both of them have helped me become a better person, um, and a better member of the community. Um, I graduated from college two weeks ago and besides my immediate family. Besides my immediate family, um, the three other people there were Hope Taylor, Ali Taylor, and Tanaya Taylor. They're just big pieces of our community. It's like you get to the end of a puzzle and there's one piece and you're like, where's that piece? They're that piece. You need that to complete the puzzle. If it's not there, it's not going to be a full picture. So, thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing, everybody? My name is Teresa Rose. It's my daughter Truvea Rose. Um, I'm from Hyannis, particularly, sorry, the stairs is a lot. Give me like a sec. I like ran trying to catch this. Um, ooh, haven't walked in a while. But no, the Taylors, um, more than an inspiration, more than an impact they've had made on, as you can see, a lot of people here. Whether it was just, you know, talking to you to do the right thing or steer you in the right direction or just, you know, guiding you and being there for you to make sure your grades are good to do the sports because Mr. Taylor was a, um, coach for me for basketball. Oh, sorry, she just threw up. Don't mind that. Comes with moming, right? Um, but no, uh, I chew. I had a, let's say decorative childhood, if you will. Uh, wasn't always, you know, doing the right thing or, you know, listening to who I should have, but like most, we don't always listen to our parents, correct? Sometimes you have to hear it from other people to tell you, hey, don't do this or hey, whatever it is that we need to do correctly. And for me, it was them. Time, time again, I mean, I found myself in Mrs. Taylor's office. It wasn't always good things, but it was also, was good things. It was for, it was to me to, you know, talk because I needed to vent about my parents or something, you know? I can't always tell them things that they, that I wanted to say would never go correctly, but at the same time, they were there. Always had an ear to listen or a shoulder to lean on, cry on, all of that. And again, sometimes it was tough love. Sometimes it was things you did not want to hear. Um, sometimes it wasn't always like, um, like, again, just wasn't what you wanted to hear. But either way, at some point it would stick to you and be like, ah, wait, Ms. Taylor said not, or Mr. Taylor, however it was guided. Um, but at the end of the day, again, I was impacted. I probably definitely want to graduate if it wasn't for them. I know that for a fact. I graduated two years later. Again, decorative childhood. But, um, all in all, please, 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 please consider any decisions you guys make determined based upon not even just this. There's a plenty of people who could not come. I reached out to a lot. I've had a lot of creative stories within themselves too. Some honestly weren't even a big favorite, but because of circumc, certain circum, circumstances that had came about, again, one situation could have been chose different and they could have, um, looked at them differently, you know? But again, if everyone has their own experiences, but please don't base this off this one situation. I don't even know it in full depth, but from based off what I know in the stories that I hear tonight, please consider it deeply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanaya Taylor, daughter of the Taylors. Um, I live in Hyannis. Thank you. Um, I also graduated from Barnstable High School. I was a Red Raider since I was born, literally. And then I was never able to be a Red Hawk, unfortunately, but Red Raiders in my blood, Red Raider is in my parents' blood and it will forever be in their blood. They have been in this building for 30 years and I understand that they need to take responsibility of what happened, but they are for a month, almost two now. They've dealt with, they've dealt with it. My mom has been doing this whole thing with the dresses for I don't even know how long, from before I got into the high school in 2014, 2015. And something like this has never happened. I went to there. I did it. My friends came with me. And at the time, we didn't have a bus. My parents wasted their gas to bring those girls that can't afford prom dresses, that can't afford shoes, that can't afford purses or jewelry. They wasted their time, not wasted, but they dedicated their time for years for this community. And they continue now dedicating their time to this community. All of these people that are here are to support them. I left my cheer practice to be here to speak on their behalf because that's how important it is to me. I just want you guys to really consider on what could happen, not only to them, but to their family. Not just me and my brother, but every single person standing behind me. They are very much deeply loved, not only people that are in this community, but people from DY, Mashpee, Falmouth, Nauset, Orleans, P-Town. You can go up and down this Cape and my parents have helped everybody, anyone, black, white, purple, green, stripes, polka dot, it doesn't matter. That's what they do. They help. They provide. They support. And that's what I want people to know about them. And I know people know that about them because that's what they show and they show it well. They do everything they do with grace as they should and nobody can take that away from them, not one person. I appreciate you guys for listening to me today and I hope you consider your decision.
Thank you.
My name is Rajay Ferguson. I was a Barnstable attendee. I did not graduate from Barnstable. It's okay. The Taylors have been like, I, both of them have been like second parents to me. I grew up with my parents, but I grew up in my grandparents' household. Anything I needed, I could go to the Taylors. I was having a bad day, anything, they were always there for me. Um, Mr. Taylor got me a job at the high school this year. I was a Project Excel tutor. He taught me many things. He taught me how to work with the kids. He taught me how to deal with them coaching wise, in the classroom, anything. Ms. Taylor, anything I needed from her, she gave it to me. I've spent countless nights, hours talking with them, sleeping over their house, doing anything. Tanaya is my best friend. She's been my best friend for years. I've never felt unsafe with them. They've brought me to basketball games, cheer competitions, have been my support. I recently graduated from college and the first people I wanted to tell was them. I went through a lot during high school and even though I did not graduate from Barnstable, I was still able to call on them anytime I needed them and they always gave me advice, support, anything I needed. They're wonderful people and yes, mistakes happen, but that doesn't mean you should hold them, hold it against them forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Fawn A. Rose. I'm Barnstable High School graduate, 2010. Um, I don't know the whole situation, but I just make sure. I know mistakes happen, but I, um, in 2000, I went through Barnstable Recreation, um, uh, camp. Uh, we got, at the Horace Mann Charter School before it was, uh, the new school now. And, um, mistakes do happen. We got to go to Providence Rhode Island Mall and I was actually left under Barnstable Recreation's supervision. They didn't do a head count until they got back to the bridge. So I know mistakes happen, but everyone else got a slap on the wrist and it's also my fault too because I didn't speak up, make sure I was with the group. So it's not all the time the supervision's a fault, it's also the student. So me going on my field trip, I should be aware of my surroundings and at the same time, I should be paying attention. So students should pay attention and the supervision. So mistakes happen, but like I said, I was left as a student, but I survived Providence Place Mall. Here I am today, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rhodes and I'm the president for the Cape Cod Branch of the NAACP. In the 1970s and the early 80s, the Cape Cod Branch worked with the Barnstable School System, all of the other Cape school systems to increase the numbers of teachers of African descent, not only because all the individuals should be given an opportunity to be hired, but because our children deserve the experience of diverse authority figures and not just have their first person be a training sergeant. The educational value of role models for African-American students who can identify with is well-established. Unfortunately, those African-Americans who left or retired have not been replaced, never mind increased. So I'm here to plead, aside from the Taylors specifically, but to recognize the number of teachers and staff of color throughout the whole system needs to be increased and the diversity and equity and inclusion programs need to be addressed and focused on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Natalie Milas and I am a Barnstable alumni. I am a Barnstable Silver Bullets Mites coach and I have a daughter that attends Barnstable High School right now. Things is a very sad day if you think about it. Look at our community, we're hurting. My daughter is hurting. Our children are hurting. We have teachers that are not being held accountable for the things that they do as Like we said, mistakes happen, but what happens when our children go and look for someone that looks like them, that represents them or stands up for them and they don't have that? In the beginning of the school year, as we see the Mashpee girl that's missing due to the bullying, my daughter was bullied significantly. And you know what I was told? That a monkey is the same thing as the N-word. They use that and substitute for the N-word. And do you know who told me that? A white civil rights coordinator, Mary Beth Shea. How do you think that makes me feel? How do you think my daughter felt? My daughter was threatened. She was told she was going to get her face smashed in. Nobody did nothing. We had people come and say, oh, we're going to file human rights on this kid. The parent appealed it. She wasn't held accountable. Then she got kicked out of a game and went back on the internet and degraded the teachers that kicked her out. No accountability and that's why our children are suffering today. That school is a zoo right now. If you don't know it, get in there because it is not a joke. These kids are- These kids are hurting. You guys ripped their cheerleading coach away for them last year. They failed, they scored terribly in regionals. Barnstable hasn't been to regionals since how long? Because of Tanaya Taylor. Our girls were, they ripped everything away from them. And honestly, it was more of a malicious, it felt like more of a malicious attack against the Taylors. And so when we hear this, it doesn't feel good. You, what do you, you feel like you rip everything away from us. You constantly, if we're not silenced, we're shut up, we're silenced, and we're dismissed every single time. And the only person that we feel comfortable going to is Ms. Taylor and Mr. L. Taylor. Because I'll tell you what, I was a hot mess in high school. Hence why I got four kids now. But Ms. Taylor was like, listen, oh, you're pregnant? Don't think you're not graduating and walking across that stage. If it wasn't for Ms. Taylor and my mother, I would not be here today. God knows where I would be. Honestly, don't know if I would be here. I battled cancer. You know who called me all the time? Mrs. Taylor. She didn't have to. She made sure my daughter was good. She was, and now that she's gone, my daughter is miserable. I'm fighting every day. You have to go to school. Well, there's no one to talk to. Well, we got, we got somebody else. Who is that? Who can they relate to? There, there needs to be black women and black figures in Barnstable. That's, this is the most diverse school on Cape Cod. I travel from Forestale every single morning for my children to go to school in a comfortable community. So we ask as a community to please, we are begging you for our children, not for us, for our children to feel safe. And that's with the Taylors. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rodney Ferguson. Most of the community here knows me, or they know my kids or my family. The Taylors are important to me. My kids back there, my daughter Rajay, their kid Tanaya, which I call my kid. About 20 months ago, I had to go on, I went to jail. And my daughter was going to school. Everything was going on. But I knew that if something was going on, she could call on the Taylors, and they would make sure that she was straight. And when I would ask about them, she would tell me, they asked about me. Am I okay? That's the type of people that they are. You know? A mistake happened. Kids get left. As a parent, I have nine kids. I've left a kid at the store before and had to go back again. Things happen, you know, the kids are, especially when you're with a group of kids and everybody got, you know what I mean? So things happen. But if their record doesn't show that this is a continued pattern behavior, a mistake is made, a reprimand needs to be made, yes, but to be taken out of this community for all these kids? That ain't right. I was given a second chance, and I don't think I deserved it. They do. That's all I got to say.
Hi, my name is Ariana Roberts. I am the older sister of Chantel Roberts, one of the young girls who were left in Boston. I just want to say, Chantel is the youngest of, there's eight of us. She's the youngest of eight of us. She's the third one of us to grad, third one of our siblings to graduate from Barnstable. The other two of us graduated from Sturgis. And seven of us went through the Barnstable School System. This is, this is outrageous. I'm so sorry. I've never heard of anything like this. She was left hours away, alone, no ride. My parents work. My parents own a restaurant. They can't close the restaurant and come get her. I've never heard anything like this happen. I just want my sister and any other child to feel safe. These are children of color she left up there. If these were white girls, I'm sorry, this wouldn't be a conversation. It was unacceptable. And I just want to let you guys know, my outrage, my family's outrage. I haven't seen my father that mad in years. This has never happened to a single one of us. He said there's, he has nine kids, he leaves, there's eight of us. There's eight of us, and this has never happened. I've never seen anything happen like this. I came here from work to support my little sister. I just came in and she's crying. She's hurt. She was scared. This is not fair. This is unacceptable. You put children under the charge of responsible adults. And she got the best-case scenario. This could be a totally different conversation. I could be mourning my sister right now. This is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to all the people. I've been through the Barnstable School System. I know the Taylors. I do appreciate what they do for this community, but this is so unacceptable. I do not think firing them is the right decision at all. But I think there needs to be training, and people need to be held accountable for their actions and their mistakes. And there's a way to remedy this with compassion, training, and a way to not hurt a community and to save what they do do for Barnstable, as all these people attest to. But I really think it's really lacking on teachers being trained. It's teacher trained, that's so unacceptable. To leave a child in a city, two young girls in a city by themselves, is completely unacceptable, and something has to be done about it. I'd love to see more compassion training for these teachers. I'd love to see teachers being more responsible because I can't, I, eight of us, there's eight, there's eight siblings. I've never heard of anything like this. I have like 10, 10 nieces and nephews, never anything like this. It's crazy. It's really crazy. And I just want you guys to hear my voice, hear my family's voice, our outrage, how upset we were. All of us, that's our baby, that's our little baby sister. And that could have gone so wrong for her. Luckily, luckily she's here, but that could have been so much worse. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Glad I'm not the first one with a shaky voice standing up here, talking about the Taylors. My name is Desiree. I am a graduate of Barnstable High School.
Desiree, can you please give your last name for the minute?
Desiree Williams. If it wasn't for the Taylors, I would have not graduated high school. I went through a rough time, as some of the other people said when they stood up here and spoke. I got pregnant in high school. And I'm sure you could imagine it was a pretty scary and sometimes embarrassing time in high school. And I was definitely thinking about dropping out, not, not finishing high school, not pursuing my education because of how scared I was and the embarrassment. But because of Mrs. Taylor and Mr. Taylor, I was able to push through. My last year was very hard. And because of Aliq Taylor, I was able to go into the Excel programs and finish online. I hear that, you know, there's mistakes that have been made and everything like that. And a lot of times, you know, we go to extreme punishment. And I don't think that's the case here. I think sometimes when things like this happen, we need to recognize that there's a point of awareness. And like the young woman just said, there's training that needs to be taking place, not the extreme punishment. I am now pursuing my education to get a master's degree. I am a business owner. And because of the Taylors, and because of the way they poured into me, and how I continually still talk to them to this day, I am able to pursue those things. So like the young women have said, we need to pay attention to the training that needs to take place. And yes, representation matters, but it's not just about replacement of the people. When you uproot the roots, that becomes an issue as well. And the Taylors are definitely part of the roots of Barnstable High School and Barnstable as a community. And I think that needs to be taken into big consideration moving forward.
Is there anybody else for public comment? There's only one, one.
Can I just say something really quick?
Very quickly, please.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear. I understand there's a lot of love for my parents in this room right now. Little negativity, but that's okay. Everybody can handle a little negativity. But I wanted to make it clear, they were not the only chaperones there. There was another adult. So it's really hard to hear that negativity fall all on my parents when it wasn't them. The person that was in charge of making sure those kids were there did not do her job. My mom made sure, is everybody here? Yes, everybody's here. She's checking the list. Everybody's name was checked off. That's all I have to say.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is now closed. I'm going to suggest a five-minute recess, and we'll come back to start the meeting. Take your seats. We're ready to continue the meeting. As we continue the meeting, I would just like to take a minute to thank everybody who came to speak a public comment. I know it's not easy for people to stand up at a televised meeting and speak. And I appreciate the respectfulness of everybody. I do want to remind everybody here that school committee is, we, we do not get involved in the personnel matters. We have three areas of responsibility, the budget, policy, and the superintendent. And so keeping that in mind, we appreciate your comments. We've listened to them. You've made some good suggestions that we'll take under advisement. And also, as part of the public comment policy, per policy, there will be no response by any member of the school committee regarding specific comments that were made this evening. And that was why, at the beginning of public comment, I allowed the superintendent to make a statement because I know that you, I'm, I don't know, I would assume that some of you would expect a response, and per policy, we do not give a response. But thank you again. Continuing with item 3.8, school committee comments and subcommittee liaison. Jen, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, I do want to thank all the people that came out and spoke so eloquently tonight about the fabric of our community and what's important. And although the decision doesn't, doesn't lie with us at all, I, it is always so heartwarming to me to see people come out and speak about what's important to them. And I think that the weaknesses make us stronger in the end. And I'm just really thankful that you mustered the courage to come in and talk about things that are really painful, memories that are hard. And I think that that's what makes us better. And that it's just such an honest testimony. Thank you for that. I'm going to leave it to Peter, and then when we do subcommittee, I'll come back.
Okay, I'm going to be very.
You can, oh, do you want to give a sub, you can give your subcommittee report. It'd be easier if each person just does their.
All right, so I just wanted to kind of give an update on where we are in the goals, subcommittee for, for the school committee. It's Andre and I and Sarah, and we've been hashing out some ideas, some bigger picture stuff for what we feel is important. And so right now, we're focusing on kind of a 30,000-foot view of who we want to be in about 10 years and how to get us there. And we're kind of backing into that. And that includes kind of a collaboration and kind of a more whole-minded idea of Barnstable as a town and not just the school committee as a standalone item. Because I think a lot of things that are happening in the town are affecting us as a school committee. of things that are happening in the town are affecting us as a school committee and in our school system, i.e. lack of housing, things like that that prevent maybe, or at least cause stumbling blocks to us fulfilling what we really want to see in our community with regard to things like DEI. And if there's no place to live, then how do we fulfill those things? So to that end, we're talking about maybe having some short workshops, just where everybody wants to hear some more time on the dais, but really to kind of combine viewership and between town council and school committee to kind of flesh out this idea of Barnstable as a whole and give some more context to the struggles that we're facing now and kind of just have larger conversations about that. But we're very much in the puzzle, kind of on the dining room table sort of a phase right now, trying to figure out what those will be. And hopefully, we'll have some at the next meeting.
So I just have one question. Are you asking for a workshop to discuss school committee goals?
No, I'm not, not yet. Well, we're going to work through that. Thank you.
Peter?
Yeah, just a couple, I'll be very brief. A couple of things. I just had to say something about graduation that I attended. It was fabulous. It was a great event, great speeches. The kids looked great. The weather was great. The event was great in itself. And thank you for everyone who helped put this day together and make it such a great day. And lastly, and I know celebration was a great success, and I have to comment that Mike Judge over here and his family have been the main doers of celebration for, how many years now, Mike?
I think it was six or seven, seven. See, Kathy knows more than I do.
Six or seven years.
That's a seven-year itch.
Seven-year itch. And Mike's last child is graduating. And they've just done a wonderful job with celebration and they're retiring from it. Have you found someone to take over yet?
No, that was part of my subcommittee-
Okay, all right, then I'll leave it. Thank you very much.
Andre?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I have a brief comment and then I have some slides. Would you want me to go at once or do you want? Okay, no problem. I'm pleased to see so many community members present at today's meeting. Community engagement, feedback, and participation across Barnstable Public Schools and at school committee meetings in particular is always welcome and displays the commitment of our students and families to achieving excellence together. Every resident of the town of Barnstable should be able to access and understand the reasoning behind the policy decisions that affect your lives. Community engagement adds value, insights, and ideas to our deliberations, which are most helpful to district leadership and the school committee members alike. I want to make these fundamental policies and prevailing laws crystal clear, as there may have been some confusion. Your presence at our meetings, participation in school functions, and community and communication regarding upcoming events is appreciated. To conclude, I just want to make the community aware, we do have two upcoming meetings as there's much going on in the district that you may want to also participate in. We have a workshop on June 13th that's going to be looking at our facilities and space optimization in the district over the next two years. And we'll have a special school committee meeting. The June 13th meeting is at 4 o'clock and that's at Barnstable High School in the library. We'll have a June 18th meeting right back here at 5:30. That's a special school committee meeting. And we're going to be discussing a number of upcoming and pressing matters, such as facilities, such as our athletics and other agenda items. So those are some upcoming meetings and we'd love to see you here.
Well, you kind of took away my thunder.
Mike?
You kind of took away my thunder. So let me first of all, so the workshop, so let me first of all, I got a bunch of stuff, sorry. So school committee comments. So I, we, Jen and I are on the facilities subcommittee. We met May, we actually had two meetings in May, May 15th and 31st. So what that kind of looks at is all of our facilities, everything about them. It's kind of a overwhelming look. So we have, if you've been following the meetings or our kind of updates, we looked at long-term about like throwing against the wall, building a new school. We've looked at, our last two meetings were about, our May 15th meeting was about looking at taking back over the Ostaville Elementary School. And all of that entails for space needs. We figured out through our report that we have space needs in the K through 3 level, or really preschool through 3 level. So one of the options was taking back over the Ostaville Elementary School. Then our meeting on the 31st, we mainly looked at, the head of our facilities at our 15th meeting brought up about, there were some portable classrooms down at Nossett that they're going to be looking to not use anymore. So do we want to get more of those? So that was our kind of, our conversation on the 31st. Jen, Jen, I, Sarah, and Kevin, the head of facilities went today to go look at those down in Nossett. So that's what that workshop is about next week, to be honest with you, is about, kind of, we've kind of got the presentation, but now we're going to give it to all of us kind of and look at it from that lens. So that's the workshop that was Andre brought up for next week, the 13th. So that's facilities. Jen, do you want to add anything to that? That kind of hit it in a nutshell?
I think that's pretty much it. You know, we're looking to just cost it out and come up with a viable solution that can get us to the next phase and look at all sorts of, you know, other moving parts that, there's nothing more complicated than school committee is my new mantra. There's all sorts of moving things that affect how and when we move forward if we decide to go for, you know, a new school or debt exclusion.
Right, new school or anything.
There's a timeline to consider. There's all sorts of things and we just want to make sure we make a fiscally responsible decision as towards the taxpayer dime. Thank you.
So that's my subcommittee part. Graduation was awesome. Congratulations to all the graduates. Also, congratulations to everybody who's all done with school, staff and students that are all done with school next Friday on the 14th. That's a half day. And then I just want to bring up something as Peter said about celebration. So celebration is, for you who don't know, it's an after-prom party. It comes, kids come back. Any senior doesn't have, they don't have to go to the prom. And anybody or their dates can come after prom, they come back to the high school. It's decorated, there's all kinds of prizes, as the kids said. I think there's prizes about every 15 minutes from midnight till 5:30 in the morning. About every 15 minutes is prizes. Kids have to be in the building in order to win it. So it's all about keeping the kids safe and sober because we were all kids once and unfortunately, bad things can happen. So my wife has run it for the last, Bonnie Stanley and her ran it up until last year and then my wife has run it last, this year by herself. As Peter said, we're all done. And my wife ran it, but there were six of us, I have four kids and myself. It was really a team of six that was, if you ever went to anything that was a fundraiser throughout the year for celebration, we were there. We were the chief people that were volunteering. A celebration needs a lot of volunteers. It's a very expensive night for one night, so there's always fundraisers. We start, we've always taken off the summer and then we start again in September. She starts having meetings and we start having, the fundraising starts. It would not be difficult if it was, if you could get a bunch of volunteers. What makes it extremely difficult is when you need 25 people for the concert and if you take out the six family members, you get six. And then you add the six of us, you're up to 12. That's what makes celebration extremely, extremely difficult over the last six years. So I've talked to other people in the community. I'm like, listen, don't take it over as one person, take it over as a group. Like if you could have six or seven people, there's probably about five or six different events throughout the year, maybe more than that. But say there's six events, if you could have a group run one and a group run the other, if you could get a group of people to run celebration, it wouldn't be very hard. It's, the problem is volunteerism is not something that's in people's vocabularies at this point. And that's a shame. It's a phenomenal event. I was a firefighter and a paramedic, you know what? I've been involved in prom things, prom disasters, in graduation disasters, and we really, 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 really need to keep this going. And so like I said, it's 100% all the people involved. My family and all the other people that have helped over the years are all volunteers. We don't get paid a dime because we believe the money, we want the money to go to the kids because that's what it's all about. So I plead with the community, this is going to go away. We're done. Like we'll, we'll, I always like helping the night of, but some other people need to step up. We ran it for 66, my wife ran it for six or seven years, two years, we didn't even have kids that were senior that were even there. And we still ran it because it was for the best of the kids of Barnstable. So the community needs to step up as coming for tonight for public comment. The community is a very, very strong community. The business pathways, people step up. Celebration is just another one that the community needs to step up. And people need to step up and take it over and run it. There's a binder like this stick that tells you every single date of what to do, every person to call, it's all a game plan. It's just you need people to volunteer to run the game plan. And then people need to backfill and help them. So that's my soapbox for tonight. But thank you. And that's, I'm done.
All right, so the subcommittee on policy revision, we had a May meeting scheduled, but we did not get feedback on policies and had no other agenda items. So that was canceled and we haven't set the next date yet. I had the pleasure of attending the concert a couple of weeks ago. Once again, the music was wonderful. And at the end, they gave an exceptional tribute to Marsha Witchraw. And as do the other people involved with theater and the arts, I don't expect her to retire and go away, but I'm sure we'll see more of her volunteering in the future. I also was able to attend the BHS Senior Recognition Night last Tuesday. I would love to thank the individuals and organizations who provided hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarship funds for our graduating students. And there were, they were spread among many, many students. And so it's always wonderful to see that happen. I would like to thank Superintendent Ahern and one of our teachers, Brendan Byrd, for attending the Job Fair in Plymouth on May 11th. Attending these job fairs in person is most, in my opinion, the best recruiting effort that we can make because the prospective educators and additional staff needed in our schools have the opportunity for a one-on-one conversation. And I'm sure that both Brendan and Superintendent Ahern represented our district well. So I thank them. Celebration, Peter and Mike, you stole all my thunder, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the volunteers, the family, the friends, the school staff who helped set up and/or chaperone the all-night event. I took my nap and didn't have to show up until 1:00 a.m. And I was fresh as a daisy while everybody else was falling over.
She found me in the middle of it and was like, oh my God, Mike, I fell asleep at 9:00. I'm like, that's nice, leave me alone.
So anyway, the cleanup crew arrived at the crack of dawn as well to dismantle, and that's a very important group because the rest of the people that were there were tired. So once again, this was an exceptional event for our graduates that provided the safe alternative to celebrate after their prom. The one thing that I would like to say, I'm not going to repeat what Mike said, but I do want to say it is a closed event, people, to ensure its safety. So other than the volunteers and the students and their dates, nobody else is allowed in. So the absolute best way to get a peek at how transformed the fieldhouse is, the high school classrooms and hallways between the fieldhouse and further down just past the gym area, the best way to see that you would never recognize it would be to step up and volunteer next year. So it is quite, it's great to see you, that fieldhouse is amazing. And I would like to personally give the special thanks on behalf of school committee to the entire Judge family who has spearheaded this event for seven years, especially Natalie Judge, who left after teaching her third graders all day and the countless hours that she spent organizing and spearheading it. And as Mike said, the more volunteers, the better. And they have, and I, you know, the people before them started the organizing of the binder that outlines what needs to be done so that it can be easily passed on. And so that's all I have for right now and I'd like to move on to 3.9, the superintendent. Oh, we have 10 minutes of activities that are happening across the district.
Yes, thank you, Kathy. I want to be mindful of time, but speak to what's going on in the district and what's taking place in the district over the last month. So Barnstable Community Innovation School recognized Memorial Day last Friday with an all-school community meeting. Special guest Lieutenant Brian O'Donnell, retired United States Marine Corps. Spoke about the importance of Memorial Day to staff and students. It was a special day for all. Also at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary, last week, they held a Memorial Day event honoring our fallen soldiers. This is at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School. During library and makerspace class at BWB, while celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, the students listened to the book, The Name Jar, then our own Ms., I'm sorry, I'm not even going to try to pronounce that, starts with an S, showed them how to write their names in the Thai language. This was at Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School. Moving over to West Villages Elementary, the Barnstable Police Department visited third graders for a K-9 presentation recently, for those of our students that may consider public safety in their future. West Villages Elementary, a K-9 presentation. Thanks so much to the Barnstable Police Department. Moving over to Barnstable United Elementary School, again honoring Memorial Day last week with songs, the National Anthem, a solo pledge of allegiance, the drum roll, entering two students from each homeroom, placed a flower and a wreath that was taken to the national cemetery. Technical Sergeant Gary Elbas, seen previously, excuse me, of the United States Air Force Unit, was present during this Memorial Day presentation at Barnstable United Elementary School. I want to thank the generous donation of the Cobb Trust so that Barnstable United Elementary School students wore their Red Hawk School shirts and enjoyed inspiring assembly with Stunt Masters BMX and core values such as trust, respect, and responsibility. Thanks so much to Stunt Masters for visiting Barnstable United Elementary School. Another generous donation of the Cobb Trust, providing new playaways, these are audiobooks for our library, recent selections focusing on celebrating diversity, equity, and inclusion with a touch of classical literature. Each audiobook is accompanied by a hardbook for follow along, making it an excellent resource for our English language learners. Thank you so much to the Cobb Trust. At Barnstable Intermediate School, we want to congratulate our track and field team on a successful 2024 season. 63 athletes collected 19 third places, 21 second places, and 12 first-place finishes throughout the season. Good luck to our 22 qualifiers heading to the All Cape Middle School Championship in June. We're going to head over to the high school now. The Barnstable High School Children's Literature Class installed a fact walk and story walk at Eagle Pond and Little River Sanctuary in Kettuitt. Students looked at more than 30 children's books focusing on nature before doing The Wild by Yuval Zumer. Thanks for the funding from the Cape Cod Five Educational Mini Grant. Students took two copies of books laminated and pages attached. This was our high school students. Staying at the high school, folks, Best Buddies had their cookout of the year. I'm upset that I wasn't there, just looking at some of the activities that went on. Fun for all ages and of course, we had a tug-of-war to finish. This was the Best Buddies End of Year Cookout taking place at Barnstable High School. Staying at the high school, student- Staying at the high school, student, uh, students from the Brazilian Mentorship and After-School Program spent time teaching some basic Portuguese phrases and language to faculty and staff while also building positive student-to-adult relationships. Thanks to the faculty and staff who attended. This is our BHS Mentorship After-School Program. Folks, uh, last, it says last night, but it was in the, the last couple of weeks, the Barnstable High School Spring Concert, uh, featuring the Spring Orchestra, Concert Band, Jazz Band, Vocal Band, Chamber Choir, uh, Concert Corral, and Modern Orchestra, uh, went on. This event was filmed, uh, by B2B TV, uh, and was, uh, a, a great overall event. I'm sorry that I was not able, uh, to make it. Uh, our Athletic Department hosted two, uh, prospective college athletes signing days. Congratulations to these student athletes and their families as they continue the next phase in pursuit of academic and athletic excellence. We're coming to the conclusion. Our Barnstable High School Girls Across, uh, participated in childhood cancer awareness. It was a win-win raising money for a great cause, uh, in their competition against Cape Cod Academy. Thanks to our Girls Across Team and their childhood cancer, uh, awareness focus. Uh, the Barnstable Sailing Team went over to Nantucket, uh, racing at the Girls Cape Cod Islands Fleet Racing Championships. Uh, teams represented by Cameron Johnson as a skipper, Manina Collins, also skipper, Eleanor Bullock, uh, crew members. They competed against ten schools, uh, and had a great showing. Uh, wrapping this up, this is something that's new in the district. Uh, and I want to thank, uh, the people in Central Office for bringing this together. Um, this is Ms. Meeger's kindergarten class, uh, and they returned to Barnstable Community Innovation School, where they began their educational journey, uh, to spend time with their kindergarten, uh, teacher. So this idea had been floated, and I really wanted to tip my hat to folks in, in Central Office for making this happen, uh, where our graduating seniors are now returning to our elementary schools, uh, to kind of see where it all began, and it's a, a, a flat-out, um, grand slam, win-win. Uh, the students love to be there, and, and it's really edifying and encouraging for the teachers. Uh, so this is Ms. Meeger's, uh, kindergarten class, and, and these are our graduates. Uh, and to conclude, uh, for those of you, uh, that were there, graduation was, was just tremendous. Uh, the weather, uh, was, was beautiful, um, and, and it was really, um, you know, we, we have to work through some things and, and it's, and it's challenging for everybody. Um, but, but, but graduation i- is an event where we all come together and, and we're all on the same page, and, and this year, the weather was great. Great speeches about things the students are doing, um, and, and I was glad to be, uh, glad to be a part of it, uh, and, um, it, it was a wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. I know that takes a lot of time to put together. All right, now we're at three point nine, Superintendent's Report.
Um, thank you. Uh, so to start off my report this evening, I too want to talk about graduation, and I want to pause and take a moment, um, to really, I think, emphasize, uh, some of what we saw in the pictures just now, um, and what Andre was talking about in terms of, I think, throughout the relationship that, um, teachers and students and guidance counselors and students and our community mentors and students are developing. And I really want to, um, thank our faculty and staff, um, at the high school. I also want to thank our faculty and staff all across Barnstable Public Schools, um, for the work they do with students each and every day, loving them, caring for them, and helping usher them to graduation, um, where we saw a tremendous graduation, uh, on Saturday. Um, another thing that I love about the end of the year, um, I don't get a lot of these, but it is a really wonderful and opportune time to, for families and parents to share accolades and support and appreciation of teachers at the conclusion of the year. I do occasionally get emails at this point in the time of the year, and I love sharing it with administration and with the faculty members themselves. So if anybody's listening, maybe a, maybe a support campaign, uh, to show, uh, to show the love. Um, I also want to thank, um, the Facilities Department, our AV, um, our AV folks, B2B, uh, Music Department, our first responders. It really takes an entire team to pull off graduation, and it was such a memorable event. Thank you to the administration and admin assistants as well for their support. Um, similarly, on behalf of the Barnstable Public Schools, I want to thank the generosity of our community in awarding over $250,000 in scholarships to our seniors at the awards night. Our Guidance Department does a tremendous job putting that together and making sure that our students are, that the support is, uh, distributed around. Speaking of graduation, uh, we just had sixty-five graduates of our Adult English as a Second Language Class, uh, or Classes, um, which is being taught by six of our educators here in the district. Um, these evening classes are highly subscribed, we have waitlists, and are supported through our Title III grant funds. A flyer just went out for the next round of courses for the summer semester. I had the pleasure, uh, and opportunity to walk through and see student presentations at the Civics Day Celebration on Monday. Uh, I spoke with students, uh, and the particular projects I saw related to, um, public service announcements and education around the dangers of vaping, uh, developing advocacy around better HVAC systems. And one, uh, particular, uh, group that I saw, um, was talking about, uh, community enhancements to Main Street in Hyannis, uh, with kind of a youth focus, which was very, very cool. And they had won an award at Bridgewater State, uh, for the work that they had done with their civics project. Uh, notably, this grade eleven group are the first cohort to have completed the civics project, uh, in grade, this grade eleven group completed, was the first to complete it in grade eight. And one grade eleven group even had a civics project, making recommendations and suggestions on how to change the Civics Action Project curriculum going forward. And then, uh, lastly, I just wanted to update, uh, you on some leadership searches. Um, we have, uh, posted for a Facilities Director and have, uh, collected applications. We have an interview team comprised of, uh, some building administrators, uh, some district administrators, and a town representative. Uh, and we will be interviewing candidates next week, uh, who meet the criteria for, uh, for the Facilities Director position, which is good news. Um, we have a finalist, uh, at the Early Learning Center. Um, she met with faculty and staff, union leadership, and families yesterday, and I'm currently accepting feedback and input, um, about her candidacy as the principal at the Early Learning Center. And, um, we have a vacancy in the principalship at the Barnstable Intermediate School. Um, I had a meeting, voluntary meeting with the faculty and staff yesterday. It was really tremendous to see how many people came to it. It was very, very, very well attended, and I really appreciate their time, uh, and input in contributing regarding my thoughts about some next steps going forward, as well as sharing, um, really candidly and openly, uh, the needs and wants that they have at the school. Um, I shared with them that, given the timing, uh, being June, um, I believe an interim leader, um, probably makes the most sense at this date. Um, it would be very difficult to initiate a search, and anyone in a current leadership position, um, is going to have a notification requirement, um, within their current contract. Um, I think we have, um, some promising, uh, candidates developing or candidate developing around this, and so more to come, uh, in the next week or so. Um, my ultimate goal is to provide some stability at BIS, um, in this interim. And again, I thank, uh, the faculty and staff there yesterday for their, uh, input. Uh, and that concludes my comments tonight.
Questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Um, next item is three point ten, Assistant Superintendent Report, Kristin.
Thank you. Um, so I had the pleasure of attending the Junior Book Awards Night, uh, or Book Awards yesterday, and while it wasn't the pageantry of the Senior Book Awards, um, it really was just amazing to see, um, the number of students, the diversity of the students receiving the recognitions around academics, community involvement, and leadership, the focus on science and math, computer science, the humanities. Uh, students, uh, received various books, certificates, and in a few cases, monetary awards. Um, but really looking to see, uh, really excited to see, uh, the number of students that were being recognized. So I'd like to offer my congratulations to all of those students, and actually including to our two student envoys who, uh, were recognized as well. So, um, well done all around. Um, the, uh, as you are well aware, uh, we have spent the last year and a half in a process to evaluate our, and select our K-5 instructional materials for reading. Um, this process was comprehensive, it was transparent, um, and very productive as we successfully adopted our new literacy program. Uh, but because of the, not just the success, but really the structures, uh, that, uh, we utilized, uh, in this process, supported by TNTP, supported by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, you know, we felt that the curriculum review process was so well-designed that we're really applying this, um, all of our learnings to our next, uh, curricula that are up for review. Um, so I will start providing some updates, uh, regularly, uh, in the next year. But we are, uh, starting the process with health, K-12, and math, 612. Uh, we actually have begun the process in terms of our data collection, uh, for both of those curriculum areas, starting with our needs assessment, collecting information from staff, students, and families as to what, uh, their experience has been with these two, uh, curricular areas. Um, and we'll continue to provide, as I said, I'll continue to provide, uh, regular updates as we get further into the review process. The math group is gonna be doing some additional work over the summer to try and accelerate the process a little bit. But we will be, uh, undergoing two, uh, pilots next year, uh, in each of those areas. And then finally, um, I wanted to provide you with an update on the mid-year check-ins. I don't know if you recall, but earlier in the year, I shared with the committee, uh, that I would be meeting with our new educators on a voluntary basis, uh, to conduct mid-year check-in conversations. Um, so I just wanted to share a little bit of, of really what transpired. Um, so I started with an email shared to the all-new licensed educators, uh, who had started with the district at the beginning of the year. We did have some hires that came in later. I wanted to make sure that, um, I wanted to start with reaching out to our staff that really had, uh, been here right from the start. Um, shared that the purpose of the meetings was to connect with our new educators to see how they felt about Barnstable. What were we doing right? What could we improve upon? Um, this was our first, uh, delving into this, uh, these stay conversations, um, to really get a sense of, you know, how do we retain our, our educators, uh, new educators in the district? Um, so I heard back from twenty educators who were willing to meet with me for a check-in meeting, which I was thrilled with, um, because I think it's a big ask. You know, they, we've, we had new educator orientation, there were lots of connections made, but I still think, you know, it's, there has to be some level of trust. Um, and that was really important to me. Um, so I provided them with the questions in advance of the meeting to make sure that they were comfortable with the conversation that was gonna take place. I met individually with each of the educators, um, in their space where they were, uh, most comfortable, unless they requested otherwise. These meetings took place between February and March. Um, after completing the meetings, I synthesized the information, um, and shared the draft summary with the educators that I met with. I wasn't going to share anything before they had a chance to look at the summary. Um, I wanted to make sure that I'd represented their comments correctly and, uh, provided them with an opportunity for corrections as needed. Um, since then, I have shared the summary with the superintendent. Um, you know, as I said, you know, throughout this process, you know, where it was the first time we had, that I had done this, uh, there was no history. They couldn't say, hey, what happened last time, you know, when you met with Kristin on these conversations? Um, you know, I really wanted to make sure that it was a positive experience, um, that they could trust me with the feedback, um, that they would be honest, that I would represent them accurately, um, and, you know, also making sure that in the summary there was nothing identifiable, that, you know, geez, Kristin always says that phrase. I would never want to put anyone in a position that, um, some content would be recognizable. Um, so the, the feedback, they said, nope, we're good to go, share it away. Um, and so I'm really pleased with the outcome, um, on a lot of levels. Um, I think we're doing good things. I think we're getting some good feedback. Um, but I also see the value of this. I'd love to continue it and expand it. Um, so where do we go from here? Uh, we will be sharing the summary report in a mini leadership retreat in June, uh, with our principals, uh, and, and directors. Uh, that information will help to, uh, inform planning for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As I said, I'd like to expand on these check-in meetings beyond new educators. Um, you know, new educators was a place to start. But also, in conversations with mentors, when I shared with them that this was what, this was gonna take place, they said to me, well, you've never done that for us. So, um, I'm happy to know that people would like to set up meetings and have conversations. So I'm trying to figure out how to scale up, um, and really learn more about how staff view the district. Again, our strengths, our areas for growth, um, but definitely some logistics, um, are needed. But I, I will just add selfishly that I really enjoyed these meetings. It was so great to sit down on these one-on-ones and be able to connect, you know, reconnect after, uh, new educator orientation. Um, so I am definitely looking forward to, uh, continuing the process in the future, and I'm happy to share, uh, moving forward if you'd like to hear more about the, um, results.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment. Um, yeah, I'd love to hear, uh, how it all went. And I'm so glad you had this mid-year, uh, check-in with the new educators. Uh, I don't think you can check in enough with them, to be honest with you. Um, so I, I, I do see great value in this and, uh, in, in this program, and, uh, please continue it and keep up the good work of that, Kristin. It's, it's a great idea. Thank you.
Jen?
Yeah, I agree. I would love to see the summaries. I think it's, um, it's awesome to, to get ahead of problems before they happen, to get some really critical feedback, whether it's, um, easy to take or not easy to take. I think it's really, it can help us really become the school we need to be, meet the moment on that, and, um, that's important. So I'd love to see the summaries. Thank you.
Yeah, just to concur with my colleagues, um, the work that you're doing integrating new staff members into the district, uh, making them feel welcome, providing them the resources that they can be successful. Uh, it's something that was brought up at our GOAL Subcommittee, uh, this plan to scale this, uh, further to our mid-career educators, um, is a group, you know, that, you know, certainly, and I'm glad to hear that they're interested, you know, in these supports, these opportunities, these resources, so that they can maintain their, uh, momentum, you know, in their called profession. And then even if it can go beyond that, you know, to our educators that are nearing retirement. How do you, um, that last phase of the journey, uh, to know that you're still valued, appreciated, respected, and you have so much to give back? Um, so it's great that it's working and that you're thinking about scaling it up. Uh, it's very promising. Nice job.
Okay. And, um, did you get a sense that they would like to stay, I hope?
Yes.
And then my second question would be, um, I hope they did provide both positive and suggestions for improvement, and are, out of the suggestions that were made, are any of them doable within the, uh, near future?
Yeah, yes. I think, in full honesty, I think that there was probably, I felt like they were very honest, but probably a little reserved, again, first time through. Um, I did say to them, I said, you know, I hope that this, you know, first, I thank them for trusting me, but, um, to hope, I hope that, you know, if someone came to them next year and said, oh, what should I do this? That they would say, absolutely, you definitely should, and yeah. So that's my hope, is another way of scaling it up, is just kind of word of mouth that this is, you know, the real deal.
I appreciate that because I do think it's important, and especially, I think that when somebody is feeling as though there's a problem in their classroom, in their building, and they, they have to feel safe being able to express a concern, knowing that it's not going to come back at them. And if we don't, if, I know if I don't know of a concern, I'm sure the administrators, at whatever level, to follow the chain of command. But if people don't know that it's a concern, we're not mind readers. So I think it is very valuable, and I thank you.
And it's all based on trust, like you said. I mean, it's, it's, trust is really, eh, eh, hard to get and easy to screw it up. So I mean, like, you need, uh, it's, like you said, they trusted you, and that's good, and, but, and hopefully it'll grow. The trust will grow. That's what it's all about.
All right. So we're on, uh, Old Business, item four point one, Revised Policy IMG and Name Change, Service Animals in Schools, um, to animals in schools. And so I'll just, these were, um, a first read at the last meeting, and so I'm just gonna do very quick recap in case somebody missed that. Um, for these, for this policy, MASC had recommended two separate policies, and so we removed the language that was related to service animals and renamed the policy IMG. the language that was related to service animals and renamed the policy I M G.
Move to revise policy I M G and name change service animals in schools to animals in school as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.2, create policy I M G A, service animals in schools, and this is the second half of the first item, and creates the policy specific to the service animals.
Move to create policy I M G A, service animals in schools as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, revise policy I J L and name change from library collection to library material selection and adoption. The policy was renamed to better reflect the content, and language was rearranged for clarity.
Move to revise policy I J L and name change, library collection to library material selection and adoption as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
And having the motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. New business, item 5.1, field trip request to Washington, D.C. in April or May of 2025. And I think we have Mr. Hurley and Ms. Walsh. Thank you.
How are you? It's good to be back.
Nice to see you all. So we are here to present what we hope to be our second annual Washington, D.C. trip proposal. We're proposing the dates May 15th to May 18th of 2025. Do we have the clicker? So just to recap, we had a very successful first annual trip this past April vacation. We had some well-spoken students sharing with you at the last meeting about their experience on this trip, and we're excited to have it be a learning experience that we can continue at B I S for the foreseeable future. We are going again to D.C. We have changed the dates to a May date. This is the 15th to the 18th, and we're elongating the trip, hopefully, one extra day. Our reasoning for this, you may have even heard from our speakers about that grueling long travel that it took, yeah, on the bus. We are traveling by bus. It is very long, and unfortunately, we recognized on this first trip that we lost out on the Smithsonian, the whole museums, because of traffic, and also just, it was a bit rushed going through. So we're hoping by adding that fourth day, we'd be able to give a better experience to our students and ensure that if there are any travel concerns, it's not going to impact our trip as much as it did this past time. We've also picked a May date as we're going now for four days. Another concern on the trip we had is not having representation of each team, seventh grade teams were split up in the building, and having a point person and that the student is currently being taught by, I think is something very important. And unfortunately, getting that coverage on an April vacation proved very challenging. We were lucky to have some excellent teachers step up in sixth grade and seventh grade, and we had a wonderful trip this year, but it's something we hope to make more available by having these May dates. It would be two days during the school week, Thursday, Friday, and then a Saturday and Sunday. These dates are also after Math M Cast, to make sure it would not impact any time on learning in the math classroom.
Thank you. The tour itinerary, it's going to be very similar to last year, except we're adding a few little, a few destinations. One of the things we wanted to put on the tour this year, we've already talked about with Explorica, and from the feedback from parents and from students, is we wanted to make sure we had the National Museum of African-American History and Culture on our visit. That is, we're hoping to plan it on day one, so we're going to leave at 5:00 a.m. on Saturday, no, Thursday, my fault, 5:00 a.m. on Thursday, and go straight into Washington, D.C., head straight to the museum, and be able to experience that before going to dinner. Again, based upon our lessons learned from the first trip, we think this is a do, very doable. We will then have dinner, the Washington, D.C. guided tour under the lights is beautiful. Day two, looking at some D.C. landmarks, U.S. Capitol guided tour, Supreme Court visit, Mount Vernon excursion, the Holocaust Museum visit. That can be a very powerful day, I can tell you that, having gone through with our students this, this year, it was, all those are very moving experiences. Day three, thank you. Arlington National Cemetery, the Marine War, the Marine Corps War Memorial, the Smithsonian's visits, we're probably going to go to the Natural History Museum, that is our goal, and then we're going to visit the National Archive, archives, Ford's Theater visit, and the Ford's Theater visit happens to have a shop right across the street from it, where the kids like to find a lot of their souvenirs, so that works out well there. And then day four, we were thinking about a nice thing to do in the morning that we could relax, enjoy, before getting on the bus, National Zoo seemed to fit the bill.
We do have information about the standards being covered. We went over these last year, too, with an interest of time, if it's okay to, okay. But we are covering many history, genocide, education, and science standards by our trips to the museums and things. So what's included, we are going with Explorica again this year. That includes our round-trip transportation, the accommodation for students in triple or quad rooms. Some students also did upgrade their accommodations as well to doubles. We have full breakfast daily at the hotel, and then a dinner every night for the students. They also have their entrance fees to all their, to the attractions are covered, the guided sightseeing tour, including a guide on our tour, on our buses. We had two this past year, those full-time professional tour directors as our point person, and then those 24-hour emergency services. And also, it doesn't mention here, but we also have overnight guards at the hotel, which is great, extra safety precaution.
So, the pricing on this, I don't believe I actually put it on the slide, I apologize about that. It's currently about $1,163. Obviously, we're looking to do the fundraising, we're going to be getting an earlier start than we did last year. June 19th is our deadline to start signing up for the quoted price, I think we can extend that, but there's also a $75 early bird fee. The numbers we looked, we look at is, we're trying to get to 45. 45 is our sweet number as far as guaranteeing that we have the lowest price available. Last year, we went for that 45 number, and we got there, and we found there was still a lot more interest, so we gambled, we went to 80, we got to the 80 travelers we needed, so we were able to guarantee that lowest price. We traveled with 68 students. We're looking to go even higher if we can, but 45 is what our, our goal is at the moment, and we build off of that, just like last year. Again, because we're getting off on an early start, we're hopefully going to be able to do some fundraising early on, especially during the summer, especially if we're able to start the recruitment, meeting with parents as early as next week, having a parents' night. The travel plus protection, that was, it's gone up quite a bit from last year. We have no control over that, that's with the insurance company. It's $179 for the entire trip. Having said that, we did have to access the travel plus protection for a few groups that weren't able to join us at the very last minute, for one reason or another. I can tell you that, you know, what happens is, now having gone through it and helped parents through this process, we applied for the refund, we were denied by the insurance company, which is what happens, and then the plus kicks in, we call Explorica, and Explorica refunds 75%. And these were parents who were literally the day of, something's happened. So having that safety net for them was appreciated by those parents, I can tell you that. There was the one other thing, but I can't think of it right now. All right. That's all we have at the moment. So that's what we propose. I know the May date's a little bit different than the April date, but again, I think Alyssa explained very well exactly why our thoughts are trending towards that direction. And our goal is, we'd love to be able to have parents come into B I S next Tuesday night, so we can pitch this to them and open it up.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, just some comments. I love D.C. It's a fabulous town. It's a great way to show people how fragile and important our democracy is, especially, you know, nowadays. Two things, don't forget George Washington's teeth. They're like amazing.
Vernon, yes.
In Mount Vernon. It's like amazing. I actually sent a picture to somebody about it, I don't know who it was, but I was like, you gotta show the kids. And then the other thing is, I think there's gonna be-
You've talked about this before, haven't you?
Yeah, because it's amazing.
You did, you asked every kid when they came.
Yeah, did you see the teeth? Like-
I saw them.
Could you just show the kids the teeth?
All right. So please do the teeth. I want to see a nice slide of that. And then also, I think there's going to be some new pandas at the National Zoo. I saw something on New York Times that there's, there's no puppies, you know, we're not going to be negative about the experience, Kathy.
No, there's two new ones coming. You're right.
Yeah, so that'll be fun.
That's great. We didn't even know about that yet.
Simply, you two should be commended, I'll commend you, for doing this and providing the opportunities for the kids. And I've done, once in my life as a teacher, I went to Washington, D.C. once, and you're coming back again, so I really am proud of you two.
Andre.
Yeah, again, just to concur, great job, and then I appreciate not losing the momentum, you know, from the last trip, and just, you know, staying right at it. Worked very hard over the years, and Tim, we've worked together before, I think, you know, to get this off the ground, and to not take anything for granted, and to just make this more and more ingrained. And then every parent, they, you know, the community really appreciated what was done. And so for this to be established in perpetuity is very, very encouraging.
So I just have Jane, I assume it's gone to Dave Anthony, and it's all set, because this is year two? Yeah? Okay, so it's all set from that spot. Thank you. I know, as I said before, I know it was a really hard, this is a way easier sell than what took you the first time, right?
We haven't forgot about Rome. We'll be back for that.
Also, I know the dates, but you know what? You learned. That's what it's all about, not to stay rigid and to be like, listen, it's better off we don't go on April vacation, the kids are going to get to see more and experience more and more volunteers and the whole nine yards, so thank you for being adaptive and kind of like not just be like, yeah, okay, we're going to do it again on April vacation, but kind of look deeper and be like, no, I think we can give the kids a little bit better, we've learned some stuff, and that's smart. Like, thank you for taking the time to look into it, you know what I mean?
The other part about April vacation next year is there was a rather large religious holiday at the beginning of it that was an issue.
Okay, so thank you. Yeah, I'm all set, I'm 100%.
I would just like to say one more thing, real quick. Not that I want to forget them, but Enid Cobb Trust was huge for us. I also, to make this happen, the more we can reach out to our community, the more the businesses can sponsor, we had quite a few kids who were able to go last year that would never have had the opportunity to go, and it was huge, and it's because of companies out there like Sam Rivera Haircuts and Shaves, 1856 Country Store, Alberto's Restaurante, Bancroft, Bancroft Brothers, and Pizza Wave. So thank you very much for their donations as well.
So, yes, thank you for putting everything together again. I think if the students who presented to us with their slide presentation go to that meeting, you'll probably have 135 attending, not, not the 90. And my children always loved D.C., no matter what their age is. Anytime we head south, we stay over in D.C. and we do a day in D.C. And their favorite was the Spy Museum, but I, I think the Spy Museum on all those levels, because you can't travel in big groups, that would be a chaperone's nightmare.
But it's right across from the theater.
Right, right.
I remember going to that.
So anyway, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, move to approve the field trip request to Washington, D.C. in May 2025 as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
And having a motion made and seconded, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, have fun.
Thank you so much.
We'll see your children next year. 5.2, facility subcommittee update, Mike, do you have a line?
So this, I already kind of said it, it's, I kind of already gave where we're at, I don't really have anything else to add, so. Does anybody have any questions? I mean, it's kind of going to be at the workshop next week.
All right. And 5.3, B C I S Innovation Plan Renewal, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Great, thank you. So as you know, we had a workshop last week related to the innovation plan at B C I S. There's a brief slideshow just to sort of anchor this conversation and to provide the community with a little bit of background information, as it resides in board docs, which is publicly available. Innovation Schools were an initiative started in 2010 with an act relative to the achievement gap when it was signed into law, to create new in-district autonomous schools that can implement creative and inventive strategies, increase student achievement, and reduce achievement gaps while keeping school funding within districts. These autonomous schools operate within a district but have some autonomies around which they can operate. This includes curriculum, budget, the school schedule and calendar, staffing, professional development, and school district policies. The most pertinent autonomies to B C I S are in the area of curriculum, where the faculty and staff there have selected E L A and math curricular programs within their own process and distinct from the district, which means that their budget for curriculum materials is kind of independent of what we plan for in the other K-3 schools. They are autonomous in terms of professional development, although they have the option to participate in P D with the district. And in policy, the most relevant policy related to autonomy is probably in the area of school attendance areas, school choice. There is no district boundary around B C I S. All of the students attending there attend on a choice basis. Enrollment starts in the late-winter timeframe, or registration, pre-registration starts in the late-winter timeframe, and then if there is a need for a lottery, that would be held more towards, I think, the May timeframe. An annual evaluation is completed by school leadership and submitted to the Department of Education, and by way of history, the Community Innovation School converted from a Horace Mann Charter School, so slightly different governance, but still, that was within the Barnstable District, to an innovation school in 2019 with a project-based learning education module, model, sorry. In terms of the innovation plan, K-3 students and B P S have a choice between enrolling in their designated neighborhood school or B C I S. As I noted, they selected curriculum materials to meet the needs of students there. There has been a focus on project-based learning, lessons, and projects. They have a community garden linking directly to grade-level science lessons. They engage students in community service projects and initiatives. They provide all students with a six-week enrichment cluster experience that is not typically offered during the school day, with great participation from community volunteers. They hold all school meetings, and they cultivate student leadership through the Grade Three Ambassadors Program. And there is a link to the original innovation plan from 2019 in this presentation. I also linked the 22-23 evaluation document. A renewal process occurs every five years, if that's what the authorization was given for, every five years. In this case, the initial authorization was for five years. The renewal process occurs at the local level. There are some steps that, that are to be followed, but it's actually a very locally-driven process that I've learned in my discussions with the Department of Education. And the school committee could choose to renew the innovation plan for up to five years. If the school committee does not renew the innovation plan, it can go back to the school building for, for rework perhaps, and then come forward again. The renewal process was led this spring by a subcommittee of the B C I S School Council. And so at the workshop, we kind of talked a little bit about where the innovation plan is currently. I did share some of my concerns related to, related to some of the, I think, things that were intended in the plan back in 2019 that haven't necessarily, in particular this year, that have been, have presented some challenges, including how to appropriately or adequately schedule for project-based learning coaching. So that was a little bit of a challenge. And we also talked about how their leadership, their teacher leadership model was heavily involved with something called cadres, or kind of teacher leader teams, to make some governing decisions across the school. And it was, I think, I hope, very informational to the school committee. There was engagement from families and engagement from faculty and staff. I think ultimately, where I walked away from that meeting, I offer, I guess this as a recommendation to the committee, taking into consideration what people had shared that evening, and my conversation with the Department of Education, which I did have a follow-up on earlier this week after the workshop, and just trying to think about the best path forward. I think the building- the workshop. And just trying to think about the best path forward. I think the building's in a little bit of transition. We do have a leadership transition at BCIS that has just been recently announced. And so my recommendation is to not make major changes, to maintain the current BCIS Innovation Plan with certain conditions, because I don't think we're quite ready to sort of authorize, or I'm not ready to make a recommendation, to make any authorization for five years. But to maintain the current plan and use the next year to really, especially the fall, to revise and deepen the engagement of the stakeholder groups. Again, the autonomies that are inherent in innovation really require that, that teacher leadership and that engagement with a broad stakeholder group. So this may be a really nice opportunity to, to dive into that. The autonomies to be considered, which are inherent to the plan, I list there. School of Choice, Curriculum, the Instructional Focus, PD, and Cadres as a model of governance. And then bring back results to the school committee in January, which could include the same instructional model, and by that I mean PBL as a focus. Or is it time to consider perhaps a new instructional model that is kind of innovative in a, in a new direction or to move away from innovation status based on, based on that, based on that work? So happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
No, I mean, I just, I'm thankful that we had the workshop that we had. I think it was eye-opening to a lot of us because we don't have a lot of interaction with BCIS. But, you know, it was Dante's school, so I happen to love it. My neighbor's here, which always helps. But I think just understanding what needs to be improved and worked on will help us maybe work together to make that happen. Although I do understand it's a, it's a governance thing. It's their governance that, that needs to come forward. I don't want to mince my words that way. But, so I hope that we can, we can find that in the next few months and, and make it, make it what it needs to be and have everybody be happy there. It's a great little school. So, and I loved going to see the, the Taylor Swift bracelet, you know, special things that they did. It was really, really great. So, and I think it's really important that we give the public a choice. I definitely believe that it's not a one-size-fits-all model. And so I'm really hopeful that we can, we can provide some leadership there that can move it forward to the next, next spot. Thank you.
Peter.
Yeah, I, I kind of left that workshop considering there was one choice of pause. And this, this PowerPoint here kind of reflects my thoughts as well. So I like what I'm seeing here.
Okay, Andre.
Yeah, for me, given the feedback from the community, their support of the Innovation Model, I'm going to agree that taking this time to look at the plan and to look at things that we can include. I just, one of the things that is kind of big on my mind that I mentioned at the, at the meeting is that in terms of the facilities and the spacing issues, I mean, having the four additional portables at that building, I think, is huge, you know, and, you know, is, allows them to have some of the resources, a lot of the resources that they need. And, you know, the schools that were impacted by that, I think it's only, it, it only makes sense to, let's have those portables established. Let's give them the resources that they need. And I think that'll go a long way to ironing out some of the issues or, you know, misunderstandings that, that may exist. So I'm going to agree that this revised, this time to look at it is favorable.
Mike?
Just for the public, I wasn't at the, I had another obligation, so I couldn't go to the workshop. I think I was the only school committee member on in 2019 when we went from the Charter School to the Innovation School. So I was involved in, in the transferring to the Innovation. So I'm well aware of how it works and all of the intricacies of it. I like this plan because a lot of my concerns are exactly what is going to be looked at in the next six months. So I won't say more than that, but a lot of my, I appreciate that a lot of my concerns must have come out in the workshop that, in order to make it for this plan for, and I also think it's like to get rid of it or not get rid of it or whatever. I think you have to give, the parents have already signed up for the school for this year, so it would be too late to do anything about that. So no, this works perfect for me. Thank you.
And before I call for a motion, one item that came up during the workshop was the change in how the recruitment for the school was done. So before I vote, I would want to know whether or not there's a clear procedure in place so that when new students enter the district and they're provided information about what their neighborhood or school would be based on their home address, how are they going to communicate to each and every family that's coming into the district that there is a choice school?
That happens through our Family and Community Engagement Center as part of our regular kind of registration process in terms of making that option known, if there's room. So kind of, that's sort of separate and apart from, I think, what, what came up in the workshop was sort of a recruitment effort in the sort of late-winter timeframe to sort of canvas and make it more broadly known and market or advertise, so to speak, that there is a, a choice at the Innovation School.
So I would just want to make sure that, especially if there's space available, that some type of a notice go out so that people are aware that the Innovation School will continue next year and that they know that it's a choice in case it fell through the cracks and they weren't aware of it.
We definitely do make it, make it known and make it aware that there's an opportunity there, you know, particularly as we look to, we definitely make it known.
Kathy, may I offer one thing? Sure.
I, I know that there's usually a waitlist there, so I'm, I'm pretty sure the enrollment isn't an issue, right? I mean, isn't there usually a waitlist at BCIS?
I think somebody at the workshop said that there used to be, but there hadn't been because of the change in how they were recruiting the students. And so...
I recall now, yeah.
Right.
I just wanted to offer one thing about parental involvement, because it is, it is a big ask to ask, you know, parents to volunteer after they're working all, I mean, we know what it's like. We're volunteering up here. So, you know, just for, for the parents that are in the room, if you have friends that want to be involved and want to learn more about how things are done, double-click on, on whatever you have there, @BCIS to help inform you. Like Erin Meeger is a great resource, other people that are a great resource. And, and my advice is go to people who are used to volunteering, because you'll get a lot more out of them than you will out of people who, who have no bandwidth for it. Because this is a, a quick turnaround for a pause. It takes a long time to motivate people, to get them to show up, to get them to understand the basic tenants of the way a school is run. And I, just in the conversation that Emily and I had the other day in my driveway, like, there's a lot to learn. It's a really steep learning curve. And, you know, ultimately we want it to be successful. Okay, ultimately, I want it to be successful. And so what are the steps to get to that would be the next question I would ask if I was on the PTO or whatever it is. So, you know, and that's, you know, as, as we talked about, the fact that it's, you know, you need the broader engagement and the fact that that's kind of like your charge, there's not a lot we can do to make that happen, but internally you guys can. So that's all. I just wanted to offer that.
Anything else? All right, motion?
Move to approve the maintenance of the BCIS Innovation Plan for the 2024, 2025 school year under the conditions presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Finance and Facilities Business?
5.4.
Oh, 5.4, sorry. It's off my screen. Approved Stable Time Coordinator Job Positions. Sarah.
Thank you. So this is a proposed coordinator job description and then a stipend later on in tonight's materials for a faculty or staff member at Barnstable High School to help to coordinate the logistics of stable time. Stable time is an hour block that is built into their new schedule next year, every other Friday. There is a list developing of some good, really good content for stable time. And I'm really looking forward to the implementation of the new schedule. I'm sure there will be bumps in the road and there will be some ups and downs because change can always be hard. But I think that there's going to be important opportunities for students to experience, some of the things that they're used to experiencing, like safety drills will be done during stable time and not interfere with academic time. But also lessons from the Hope Squad, for example, around suicide prevention. One Love is a foundation that talks about dating and relationships and reducing, reducing violence in relationships. So that's an example, you kind of fostering a positive culture and climate and making sure students are using the Say Something app and what happens with, with concerns or complaints that come our way. And so they are developing kind of a list of, of things to do during stable time that I think are going to be really well, well, well-placed and not get in the way of classroom academics. We're not going to have to cancel classes in order to make those additional lessons happen. But I think there's an opportunity to involve a faculty and staff member in helping with the logistics. I think having the eyes of a faculty member and the participation will only make it stronger and not have it rely solely on sort of administrative initiative. And so this job description was put forward. I've talked about it with the BTA. We think that it's similar to some other stipends we have, like the enrichment cluster coordinator at our K-3 schools. So from a 2023, 2024 standpoint, that was about, that was $2,000. Our stipends do change in successive contracts depending upon what's agreed to. And so hoping that the school committee will support the approval of this job description and then later on the, the stipended position for next school year.
Questions, comments? All right, motion?
Move to, move to approve the Stable Time Coordinator Job Description as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Finance and Facilities Business, Item 6.1, Approved Stable Time Coordinator Stipend. I know we had materials. It's according to the BTA contract. So does anybody have any questions? My only question would be that, is it, is, Chris has, has it in the budget?
We'll fund it out of the high school stipend line. Yeah.
Okay.
Move to approve the Stable Time Coordinator Statement as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.2 is removed from the agenda. Item 6.3, Approve the Employment Contract for the Data and Accountability Analyst.
Sarah. So there is a three-year contract in your materials for the Data and Accountability Analyst at a compensation of $124,500.
Questions?
Move to approve the employment contract for the Data and Accountability Analyst, Maureen Lovett, from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027, with a base salary of $124,500 in other terms as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item 6.4, Approve Fiscal Year 24 Grants, Gifts, and Donations. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Dwelly? I have one comment. I would like to thank Wendy Wu for her private donation that's on this agenda item and the funds that are supporting the Mandarin Chinese program at BHS. It was very, she attended some activities and was impressed by the program which resulted in the donation. So I thank her.
We all set. Move to approve FY '24 Grants, Gifts, and Donations as outlined in tonight's materials.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.5, Budget Transfer Authorizations. Chris?
Thanks, Kathy. This evening, we have two budget transfers before you. Both are a result of end of the fiscal year account cleanup, given that we're about three weeks out before the fiscal year closes. The first is a request to transfer $65,000 to the Athletics Department's budget. This transfer will actually allow us to resolve a deficit that we have in the Athletic Department Revolving Fund. We've talked about this with the committee. This came up during FY '25 budget planning process. We don't anticipate this happening again next year, given the committee's vote on funding the Athletic Department, but we need to resolve that deficit before the fiscal year ends. The second transfer is $300,000 being transferred to the Transportation Department for Special Education Transportation. There's been a handful of placement changes that have occurred throughout the year, where students are being placed further off Cape, resulting in an increase in transportation costs, as well as some challenges with us hiring and, well, really hiring our own internal in-house transportation staff, which results in us paying a higher cost to contractors to transport these students. So we anticipate that we've budgeted this accurately for next year, knowing these placement changes, but will run short this year without this transfer.
Any questions?
Move to approve budget transfer authorizations as outlined in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
And having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.6, Approve Accounts Payable Warrant, Fiscal Year 24, Warrant Number 49.
Move to approve Account Payable Warrant, FY '24, Warrant Number 49, in the amount of $200,429.68.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining because I haven't had a chance to review the warrant. Executive Session, Item 7.1, Move to Go Into Executive Session to Approve the March 25, 2024.
Can I just point of a whatup?
Yeah.
You just didn't say to reconvene in open session.
I, I didn't do the motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So move to go into Executive Session to reconvene in open session. I'll do it upfront. To approve the school committee executive session minutes of May 1, 2024, and May 20, 2024, to discuss salary adjustments for non-affiliated personnel, to discuss the terms and conditions of non-affiliated personnel contracts for Sarah Hearn, Kevin Maxim, and Ken Stollosky, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable Teachers Association, paraprofessional and administrative assistant units, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable Administrators Organization, and to discuss strategy and/or contract negotiations regarding collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Council 93, Local 2977, Maintenance and Custodian Units. And we will reconvene in open session.
Second that.
Having a motion made and seconded. This requires a roll call. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike? And I vote yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes.[533.04]
I now call the open meeting back to order. We are at item...
Eight point one.
Eight point one. Approved non-affiliated salary increases for fiscal year 25.
Move to approve non-affiliated salary increases for FY '25 in the amount of 3%. Except for bus monitors or in assistance in the infant toddler room will go to 3.5% as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item eight point two, approve superintendent's salary.
Move to approve a...
For fiscal year '25.
Move to approve a salary increase of 2% for the superintendent for FY '25.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries... Oh, all opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Motion carries for approve one abstention. Item eight point three, approve memorandum of agreement between the Barnstable School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Maintenance and Custodians Unit, Council 93, Local 2977, as presented to the school committee and ratified by the bargaining unit.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Barnstable School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Maintenance Unit, Council 93, Local 2977, as presented to the school committee and ratified by the bargaining unit.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Barnstable School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Custodial Unit, Council 93, Local 2977, as presented to the school committee and ratified by the bargaining unit.
Having... Is there a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Jen?
Yes, why not?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. That concludes...
And their flight feathers are black with brown stripes and are...